All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the order this meeting of the Planning Commission on November 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Galen?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Black?
Present.
Vice Chair Carter?
Present.
Chair Menthe?
Present.
Thank you. We have five commissioners present.
All right, now let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May be given. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not, Chair.
Okay. So we did get some considerable correspondence. May I have a motion for receipt and filing of correspondence? See a motion?
Thank you.
The second?
Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Okay. Our next item is consent item. The draft commission meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025. Any discussion, any public comment on the?
We do not have any.
We do not. Any discussion from commissioners? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Thank you. Who moved it? Thank you. Vice Chair Carter, moved by Vice Chair Carter. And the second? Thank you. Moved second by Commissioner Van Galen. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Okay. And now we're here for item PH1. I believe we do the staff report and then open the public hearing? Can I only do this? All right. Oh, yes, we have a comment from Mr. Vangela.
Yes, just a brief announcement. Our planning director, Mark Munzer, normally would be here, but at the moment he's accepting an award on our behalf at the West Side Urban Forum for multifamily housing. This is our fifth general plan award. We're very excited about it. He will be joining us later online. Thank you.
That's a terrific reason to be away. All right, I'm glad to have you sitting in the chair. If we're ready, we can have a staff report on PH1. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission. My name is William Covadis, Assistant Planner. And the item before you tonight is a 147-room hotel project at 11469 Jefferson Boulevard. The item was continued from the last meeting at the request of the applicant. The project site is a 33,813 square foot parcel at the intersection of Jefferson Boulevard and Slosson Avenue, currently occupied by a single-story 13,000-square-foot shopping center. The subject property is located in the MU2 zone, but was deemed complete under the old zoning code, so was reviewed under the commercial general zoning standards. Commercial uses border the site to the south and east, with single-family residential uses to the north. Commercial uses in the 405 freeway are located to the west. In July of 2021, City Council approved a 175-room hotel project with associated amenities at the subject site. Since the entitlement was granted, the applicant applied for extensions as they sought the necessary funding to construct the project. This current applicant team approached the city in 2024 to inquire about reducing the scope of the project to better reflect current market conditions. The modified project has reduced the square footage from 111,000 square feet to 109,800 square feet, reduced room counts to 147, and removed several amenities, including meeting rooms, lounges, and a rooftop bar and pool. The reduced scope, as approved, includes 147 guest rooms, a ground-floor restaurant, a coffee shop, and one level of below-grade parking and one level of at-grade parking. The applicant has also applied for an AUP to offer alcoholic beverage sales at the restaurant and in the hotel lobby. Here are four renderings of the project, a view of the project from Jefferson and Slosson in the upper left-hand corner, and from the pool deck in the upper right. The lower two images show the views from Jefferson and Slosson at ground level and from the rear of the building at Slosson in the public alley. The applicant will provide more design details during their presentation. The project has a modern architectural design with lighter stucco and darker earth-toned accent colors. The ground floor has a facade along street level to help activate the sidewalk. Upper floors facing the intersection are also well-windowed to open up and lighten the structure. The rear of the building will provide upper-story setbacks and stepbacks adjacent to R1 neighborhoods. And the project includes a pool deck, but it will now be located in an interior courtyard, which will eliminate visibility from adjacent properties. Based on a supplemental traffic study conducted for the revised project, the proposed modifications will result in a net decrease of 835 fewer vehicles to the site daily. The project also exceeds bike parking space standards, providing 10 short-term and 10 long-term bike parking spaces with a shower room amenity for employees. It meets all requirements for EV parking space allocation, and will provide 105 parking spaces for guests and employees. Most of the parking will be provided in a below-grade garage, with 29 spaces provided in a ground-level garage that will be accessed from the alley. A supplemental noise study was conducted as part of the modified project. The applicant team will install a noise wall during construction, which will keep noise levels to a decibel level consistent with noise element standards. Further, the removal of one level of previously approved below-grade parking will mean less excavation, thus reducing construction impacts. Operational noise from the hotel is not expected to raise noise thresholds above what is generally perceptible above ambient conditions. The applicant has applied for an administrative use permit for alcohol sales. A future restaurant user will be required to submit a conformance review to the current planning division prior to opening to ensure the proposed operator conforms to the conditions of approval. The lobby sales will occur at the front desk and will serve hotel guests only, as an option for those who may want to drink alcoholic beverages in their rooms. The California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, outlines a process for modifications to an already-approved project if the impacts are less than that of the original. The approved project completed initial study and mitigated negative declaration, or MND, which determined the potential environmental impacts would be less than significant with mitigations incorporated. For this project, technical studies and an addendum to the original certified MND determine that the revised project falls below the thresholds, scale, and built area for the certified MND. All previous mitigation measures will be implemented. An environmental impact report, or EIR, is only required when environmental impacts cannot be mitigated to less-than-significant levels. Two community meetings were held for the project in October of 2024 and June of 2025. Twenty-seven people attended the first meeting, and 17 attended the second meeting. Concerns included construction and operational noise impacts, parking and traffic impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhood, and maintaining privacy for adjacent residences. As discussed, the modified project is a reduction in overall scope compared to the original. A look-back condition has been carried over from the original project to monitor adjacent neighborhood parking, and if the city determines that the hotel is having a parking impact on the adjacent residential streets, the hotel will fund a parking permit study. The same condition also requires the applicant to fund a study to identify potential traffic intrusion measures within the Sunkist Park neighborhood. Construction impacts will be reduced because of the smaller project, and operational noise will be less due to removal of balcony and rooftop elements approved for the original project. During the public comment period, the city received 38 letters of opposition to the project from 24 individuals and 47 letters encouraging tighter permit issuance deadline from 44 individuals. The city also received a community petition signed by 135 members of the public opposed to the project. Comments received from the public included items such as extent of public notification, loss of natural lighting and privacy, and parking impacts. Public noticing was conducted in accordance with zoning code provisions and was extended to City Block for additional notification. Concerns about natural lighting and privacy are addressed by zoning code requirements for upper-floor setbacks, and the parking meets all applicable code standards as previously discussed. Public comment related to construction and operational impacts were addressed in sort of a MND and its addendum. An EIR is not required for this project because of the technical studies substantiating that all potentially significant impacts could be mitigated per the mitigation measures of the MND. The applicant has agreed to increase the height of the sound wall from 10 feet to 16 feet at the request of the public, and a project design feature has been added to the conditions of approval to address community concerns about vibration impacts to our rear yard ADU. Several comments received by the public are not generally under the purview of the Planning Commission or addressed by the zoning code, including developer responsibility and the perception of increased crime. The developer has experience with other hotel projects in Southern California, and this hotel will cater to professional and business travelers that are not expected to cause adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Staff believes findings for SPR can be made, as the project is consistent with all applicable zoning standards and general plan policies. The modern design of the structure improves the aesthetic of a key intersection and meets code requirement setbacks adjacent to residential uses. And the environmental studies have shown that the reduction in overall scope of the previously-approved project will continue to be compatible with the surrounding community. Also, while the city's new general plan is housing-forward, the document also has goals and policies to encourage the development of new hospitality uses. Further, on Monday night, the City Council approved a consultant contract to conduct a market analysis and advise on how to encourage hotel development in Culver City. That study is expected to be completed in 2026. Staff checked with the city's finance team, and they estimated that the hotel could produce $1.5 million in transient occupancy tax for the city's general fund per year. AUP finance can also be made, as the alcohol sales will be ancillary to the primary hotel use and cater to hotel guests. Future users will require a conformance review to ensure compliance with conditions of approval, and the city reserves right to revoke the AUP for noncompliance with conditions. At this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the motion to adopt an addendum to the 2021 MND and approve site plan review and administrative use permit subject to conditions of approval. Staff has two corrections to be read into the record, one for condition of approval number 33, to remove the specific requirement to repave the intersection of Slosson and Jefferson, as the intersection was recently repaved in 2022, and language has been added to condition of approval 64 that reflects a project design feature to address vibration concerns for the adjacent ADU. This language has been provided to you on the dais and has been made available to the public copy in the rear of the chambers. Staff is available for any questions you may have for us. The applicant team has their own presentation they provide during public comment. Thank you.
And Chair, I just wanted to add something else. In light of the comments received requesting that the city conduct a subsequent EIR, I wanted to direct the commission to the CEQA guideline describing when a subsequent EIR would be required after a mitigated negative declaration was previously adopted, which is the case here. There is a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared and adopted by the Planning Commission and actually affirmed by the City Council on appeal back in, I believe, 2019. So pursuant to CEQA guideline 15162, no subsequent EIR shall be prepared for a project that meets this criteria unless the lead agency, the city, determines on the basis of substantial evidence in light of the whole record that one of the following has occurred. And I'm going to try to paraphrase this in the interest of time. One, that substantial changes are proposed to the project which require major revisions to the mitigated negative declaration due to the involvement of new significant environmental effects. Two, that substantial changes have occurred with respect to the circumstances under which the project has undertaken, which require major revisions to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration. And then three, that there is new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the previous mitigated negative declaration was adopted, which shows that either the project will have significant effects not discussed in the previous MND, or that significant effects previously examined will be substantially more severe than shown in the previous MND, that mitigation measures previously found not to be feasible would in fact be feasible, and the project proponent is refusing to implement them. Or that mitigation measures, which are considerably different from those analyzed in the prior MND, would substantially reduce one or more significant effects in the environment, but the project proponents declined to adopt the mitigation measure or alternative. The addendum that was prepared for this MND finds that none of these circumstances have occurred as analyzed in the addendum. But just in light of the comments that have come in urging the city to prepare a subsequent EIR, the only way to do so would be to find that one of these circumstances has occurred as established by CEQA guideline 15162. And I'm happy to answer questions about that either now or after a public comment. Thank you.
Did have one question. There are two conditions. We were given these here. Do we actually need to read those into the record right now? Or is it sufficient, Ms. Burrows, just to have it in written form?
Normally, it's sufficient just to have it provided to the public and to the Planning Commission, and these conditions, which can be found in the tables at the back for anyone who's interested in looking at them, are included in staff's recommended motion, which is on the screen right now.
So before I open the public hearing, any clarifying questions for Mr. Covadis?
So just to say, I think what you just said, which is that the modifications to what was in the agenda, everyone in the room can access by going back and picking them up. Okay, thank you.
Any other quick clarifying questions before we open the? All right. May I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Carter? And the second? Thank you. And second by Commissioner Van Galen? Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, respected Planning Commission, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Atman Kadakia, and I'm the managing principal here at Greens Development. First off, I want to thank you all for your time tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to present a significantly improved and less intensive version of a hotel that the city has already approved for the site. I thought William and? As you all know, this site is already approved today for a 175-room hotel known as the Jeff. We have no affiliation with the prior developer. What we're presenting tonight? Sorry about that. What we're presenting tonight is materially smaller, quieter, and more neighborhood-compatible of a version that was already approved. Our environmental team has prepared an addendum to the certified MND confirming that all of the impacts are equal or reduced. We're proposing 147-room hotel instead of 175, no rooftop bar, no rooftop pool, no meeting rooms, all of which were sources of activity, traffic, and noise in the approved project. We will use the same ingress and egress points as previously analyzed and previously designed, and we meet all the zoning codes without asking for any variances or concessions. The significantly scaled-back project has dramatically reduced operational intensity. The site today is a deteriorated, underutilized strip center built in the 1980s that is long past its useful life. Several of the restaurants and tenants are vacated, boarded up, and have bars, metal bars, in front of their storefronts. Our project replaces it with a clean, modern, well-lit, professionally managed hotel that significantly improves safety, aesthetics, and activity on this corner. Our public spaces use modern, light design finishes to create a safe, inviting arrival space. Everything here has been designed to be calm, inward-facing, which really helps protect the surrounding neighborhood. You can see our fitness room, our lobby check-in front desk, and a sitting area that faces out to Slosson. Our rooms are designed for business travelers, sports teams, and families visiting nearby medical facilities. We will also accommodate some people in between homes, but we do not allow any guests to stay beyond 28 days. Our guests typically generate far less trips and have quieter activities than convention hotels or hotels designed to host weddings and events. In our view today, Culver City just simply does not have this product, and guests must stay in neighboring cities such as Marina Del Rey, El Segundo, and the LAX Airport area, costing the city significant revenue and local businesses equally tremendously. Our interiors use a modern, calming palette with built-in furniture and a kitchenette. We intentionally brought in grays, blues, and whites, which we felt was modern and compatible with today's design. Each room has an activity and work desk. It also has a sofa bed. There's also a small bar stool area to dine and overlook the kitchen into the TV, to the TV, which is also visible from the sofa area. The TV can also swivel to the bed area as well. Each room additionally also has a full closet. We're open to modifying landscape species to match Culver City's preferences, and we've already received good input on shade-oriented trees versus palm trees. Our landscape architect is here today to help answer any questions and discuss his vision for the project from a landscape perspective if needed. This aerial view illustrates one of the biggest improvements. All of the noise generating areas are enclosed. Our pool and amenity deck are on the second floor, surrounded by three walls of guestrooms, and unlike the approved project, which includes, excuse me, unlike the approved project, which included an open-air rooftop bar and pool. This slide here shows how we've increased the setback facing the alley, pulling the top rooms further away from the neighbors than what was originally approved. This change cost us about 15 rooms from the design that we had initially proposed to the city, and this directly addresses some of the privacy concerns raised at the community meetings. Once again, the interior amenity area is fully contained on three sides, which greatly reduces noise. There's no rooftop activity, no rooftop bar, and no late-night open-air uses, as our pool area and amenity area has a 10:00 PM strict curfew to not, you know, impact our own hotel guests. This view reinforces how the new step-back design against the alley from the neighbors goes inward and avoids visibility issues of the previously-approved project. We also eliminated all of the balconies on the project. This greatly additionally addressed some of the concerns about privacy. As we've stated many times, this project is smaller, quieter, and far less intensive in every meaningful category. We have 28 fewer rooms. We have a fraction of the employees. We are expecting to have about 15 full-time staff members, as opposed to 50 of the previously-designed hotel. Our project's construction duration is considerably shorter. Our underground parking level is only one level down versus two. We have a greater setback from the neighbors on the upper floors. Again, no rooftop bar, pool, or event space. Every one of these items is a direct improvement over what was already approved and in response to the community hearings and the comments that we've received. We are accepting every single mitigation measure from the prior project, noise controls, cultural monitoring, environmental protections, construction management plans, and more. A key requirement, as William outlined, is the temporarily sound wall, which adds a lot of cost, but is ultimately the right thing to do for the neighborhood. We are committed to delivering this project responsibly. We have held two community hearings, one on October 2nd and one on June 17th. I think William mentioned 43. I thought we had more than 50 attendees, but he's probably right. Several of the design changes included the increased setbacks, the elimination of certain rooms that were the direct outcomes of that feedback, and we're open to continuing that dialogue throughout construction and beyond. Some questions as regards to what type of guests we have. Our guests are families, medical visitors, business travelers, sports teams, and just generally people needing a quiet, safe place to stay. They will support local restaurants, shops, and services. We expect them to bring daily economic activity to Culver City. Our project is investing 60, we're investing, excuse me, about 60 million into the project, and we are projecting $2 million a year directly to the city's general fund. A million, five of that comes from transient occupancy taxes, but there are a series of other ways that the city benefits, including property taxes amongst others. These funds are at the city's discretion. They can help support parks, police, library, community services without raising taxes on the general public. We take great pride in being local community partners, and we're active supporters of local schools and youth programs. It may not look like it now, but I used to have a jump shot, and we're big fans of high school sports teams, and we've historically always supported local teams, and that's been one of the big areas where our companies like to give back. We have programs with our own staff that allow children, for example, to earn laptops if they, if their parents, you know, children of parents who work at our hotels to earn laptops, if they achieve a certain grade point average in high school for a semester. And that's just one of many examples that we've done over the years to take care of the people that work at our hotels and also become very much a part of the communities that we do business in. So in closing, I just want to, once again, thank you all commissioners. Remind you guys, this is not a new project. It's a significantly and dramatically less intensive version of a hotel that the city has already approved and whose entitlements are currently active and valid. We could go build the Jeff Hotel as previously approved right now if we wanted to. But by reducing the rooms, eliminating the rooftop activities, increasing the setback on the upper floors, cutting the construction impacts, and accepting every mitigation measure, we believe that this is a quieter, safer, smaller, and more responsible project that delivers long-term economy to the community and community benefits to Culver City. We request your support tonight. We respectfully are here to answer any questions that you may have, and our team of attorneys, engineers, architects, technical consultants are all standing by. And I'm here as well, so please let us know if there's anything else we can help answer to clarify. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, members of the commission will have the opportunity at the end of public hearing to give comments and ask questions. I presume the aptitude will, of course, be answering those questions when the time comes. So, at this point, are there any quick clarifying questions for the applicant? If not, we'll hear from the public.
Chair, we have thirteen speakers registered. How many minutes would you like?
Uh, three minutes.
Three? Our first five speakers are Andy Schmidt, Emily Fisher, Edward Walkovitz, Lahari Kattam, and Jason Denegi. Our first speaker is Andy Schmidt.
Hello, my name is Andy Schmidt. I live on Seagull, close to the proposed construction site, with my wife and daughters, age four and six. I have serious concerns about the proposed hotel that I feel have been inadequately addressed by the mitigated negative declaration. This proposal is a significant change from the previously-approved project and introduces new hazards to the community that need to be understood before they're decided on. I ask that the Planning Commission require an environmental impact report so we can understand the true costs and dangers of this project on the surrounding residents. The originally-approved project addressed privacy and aesthetic concerns for residents by featuring landscaped garden terraces with multiple setbacks and angled the hotel rooms away from the resident's backyard. The new plan has no landscaping facing the residential zone, and the rooms now face directly into our backyards. This significant change was hand-waved away, saying it had no significant effect and fails to address or even acknowledge this fundamental change to resident privacy. Foremost in my mind, however, is the danger this hotel presents to my children in the form of significant traffic increases on Seagull and exiting the alleyway. The alleyway exits are already a pedestrian hazard, especially for young children. They're completely blind, with visibility blocked by over-six-foot-tall cinder block walls that do not allow exiting vehicles or sidewalk pedestrians to see each other until the pedestrian steps directly into the path of a vehicle. My children and I have nearly been hit by delivery trucks to these alleyway exit zones. This hotel allows substantial alleyway traffic, increasing the likelihood of pedestrian-vehicle collisions. This hazard was not identified or addressed in the original M and D or addendum. The original traffic study recommended limiting hotel exit traffic to right-only, diverting vehicles north through the alleyway. But the new plan proposes two alleyway exits, allowing left turns crossing this alleyway hazard and encouraging additional traffic down Seagull. This is a significant downgrade in pedestrian safety from the original plan, and yet has not been addressed in the addendum. The new plan reduces parking spots to one oh five while adding a coffee shop and restaurant, yet does not acknowledge the increased parking demand. The coffee shop location directly encourages parking on Seagull and will increase pedestrian traffic across this hazardous alleyway exit. This is a fundamental change to pedestrian and vehicle travel paths and parking patterns that has not been addressed in the M and D or the addendum. This proposal contains numerous significant changes that introduce hazards for the community, yet those changes are being hand-waved away with little consideration or evidence. I ask that the Planning Department consider and address our concerns before deciding to approve or deny this new plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Fisher.
I heard one thing was already addressed, but I'd like to ask the person that was speaking before me if if the windows are fixed and not operable.
They're fixed.
Okay. So, now that I see that there's no balcony that's of use, that's part of the problem. One of the things that this commission doesn't seem to know anything about, it has to do with the city council as well, is that you are not aware of the impacts of air pollution and what we have in Culver City. The entire metro area of Los Angeles is number one and has been for years in ozone levels. This project is right next to the 405 freeway, otherwise known as a parking lot, and I know, because I'm standing in front of you speaking with a terminal lung disease because I live too close to the 405 freeway. What I don't think that this commission understands is the impact on neighbors of putting very tall things next to very small, one-story buildings, and the quality of life, as I have lived here for fifty-two years, has diminished every single year. When you add more capacity to the roads, which cannot be enlarged, we can't do anything about the infrastructure here, it impacts all of us, all of us that are going down to that area, that go to Sprouts or to the bank or whatever. I don't live in that area, but I have next to me a building that is going up that has four stories in between two single-story homes on a street that's mostly single-story home, single-story buildings. What I would like to to bring to your attention is the fact that before you approve things that add to the capacity to roadways all around us is what the impact is on the air. And that is the most important thing, because you keep saying in all of these negative declarations, and I read every word of the legalese, that you are not doing harm, but in fact, you are doing harm to the entire community. I'll speak on the other thing that I've signed up for later, but that's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Walkovitz. He's not registered or here in person. I'll skip over to Lahari Kattam.
Good evening, honorable Chair of the Public Commission, honorable Commissioners, and the District of City staff, and everyone who has joined here today. My name is Lahari Kattam. I reside at 11546 Segural Way, directly adjacent to the proposed hotel backing the alley. I stand before you today, appealing not just to your duty, but to your legacy of excellence. Culver City has historically served as a bellwether to other cities across L.A. County, setting the standards for the sensible and rigorous development codes. We urge you, in the spirit of the pioneering leadership, to uphold the standards and integrity that made Culver City the model community. To do so in this case, we mean placing the residence health, safety, economic, and housing security as the absolute utmost priority over expedited project approval. The first point I want to highlight is the personal impact, economic, and housing security. Commissioners, my issue is not merely one of the construction annoyance. Me and my husband are legally here on H-1B visas. Due to the nature of the employment and my husband's employment, I am required to work from the home hundred percent of the time, and my professional output is highly dependent on the quiet, vibration-free environment. The constant high-level disturbance expected from shoring, excavation, construction movers from the subterranean garage will make my home workplace unusable. If I'm unable to perform any of the job effectively, and I will lose my employment, I will forfeit my home, and due to my visa status, be forced to leave the country if I'm unable to secure a job in sixty days. Your addition today has a direct catastrophic impact on my housing and economic stability. The other point I want to highlight is the technical flaw health risk and the property damage liability. The existential threat is amplified by a critical error in the project's own environmental document, Noise and Vibration Study. The Noise and Vibrational Technical Report is flawed because it appears to baseline the baseline calculations on an inaccurate separation distance, likely using fifty feet, when the true distance from the construction boundary to my sensitive residential structure is twenty-nine feet. This closure proximity means resulting vibration will exceed the human annoyance threshold and poses significant risk of property damage, including the foundation movement and cracking of the walls. Furthermore, the site is a former Texaco gas station with known total xylene contamination in the ground in the groundwater. The deep excavations and duering activities will release the volatile organic compounds, which would introduce toxic vapor intrusion into the occupied home. The need for mitigation is very important and the place of burden of proof and suffering on the adjacent region. Given the unprecedented proximity and magnitude of disturbance, including noise, structural structural risk mitigation, must shift from minor adjustment to the comprehensive protection. We demand the city mandate the following as a project approval: Reject the current noise and vibration analysis. Mandate a pre-construction structural service. Mandate weekly and professional and exterior cleaning. Yeah, just one request. Yeah. We happen to not we happen to not one of my neighbor wants to speak, and he haven't got the WebEx link, Zoom link, who is on Zoom, so just wanted to request that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Denegi. He is not registered to speak or on Zoom. Our next five speakers are Allison Tom, Diedrich Rogers, Bill Robertson, Perry Mead, and Andrea Romero. I'll call on Allison Tom. She is not present or on Zoom. Our next speaker is Diedrich Rogers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I manage a property just to the west of this location, and we're very concerned about the pilings and the drilling and the construction that would take place, staging of materials and the like during the construction period. I was curious to know what measures can be taken to lessen the impact to our businesses? Can I open that question up to anybody who would like to answer?
Are you done with your public comments, sir?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Robertson.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for the presentation on what you're building and all of that. But I have to agree with the other people who live on Seagull and around the area. The noise factor in itself, and the pollution, and the fact that there was a gas station there, and the problems with the traffic are going to be unbearable for the ones of us that live in this area. I've spoken to about forty other neighbors of mine at a block party that we had. No one is for this hotel going in there. Everyone is very worried about it. They're not sure what to do, and it's just very frustrating that we're all just trying to make ends meet here, and we're all just trying to live our lives in this community. And it's a very close community. I mean, I've been here for twenty years, and most of my neighbors have been here for long periods of time. And now this coming in, none of us really understand why. I mean, they're going to have a view of the highway, and it's the traffic there is already very ominous. This is just going to present so many problems, and I understand it's going to bring money into the city, and I know that's always the main issue, is that everyone's trying to bring in more money. But developers don't always they don't always, I mean, it sounds like it sounds like they're trying to do the right thing, but I understand that, you know, developers are about making money, and just right now, this community I haven't spoken to one person who's actually for this. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there and have my voice heard as well. And, I mean, I'd like to see just a nice little restaurant in there so that the community could all, you know, visit it, and we could continue to build on that compared to a hotel where everyone's coming in from the outside, and it doesn't really serve our neighborhood whatsoever. So, that's all. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Perry Mead.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Perry Mead, and I'm a research analyst with Unite Here Local Eleven, which is the hospitality workers' union, representing thirty-two thousand members across Southern California and Arizona. Our union is here tonight because we care deeply about how development shapes Culver City. Time limits on development permits are important for protecting the city's interests. They are good public policy, and they prevent projects from sitting idle for years and discourage land speculation. They also ensure that developments meet current building and safety codes, reflect today's planning priorities, and make the best use of valuable land near transit and housing corridors. The Jeff Hotel project site is within a half-mile of a major transit stop and zone as mixed-use corridor two, an area meant for housing and mixed-use development. Allowing permits to stay open indefinitely delays opportunities for the city to create the kind of housing in vibrant, connected neighborhoods that we need. When permits linger for years, it not only stalls progress, but can also undermine the findings that justify the project in the first place. We urge you to hold the Jeff Hotel project to a fair but firm timeline. Their latest extension already gives them until July 2026 to begin construction, the maximum allowed under the Development Code. That's generous and reasonable. Please grant the applicant no more than one additional year to obtain their building permits. We provided language in our comment letter that was submitted by Jordan Sisson, our attorney. We provided language in our comment letter that would back this. And just to be clear, this only means that the applicant needs to take out building permits in that one-year timeline. In the revised M and D, the applicant stated they'd be able to commence construction as soon as spring 2026. Timely development serves the public's interest, and it means that projects actually get built, neighborhoods see the promised improvements, and our city keeps moving forward. Thank you for your time and commitment to ensuring responsible development in Culver City.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Romero.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Andrea Romero, and I'm a Unite Here Local Eleven member. The Jeff Hotel project was initially approved over four years ago, and the project has received multiple extensions, which, under the Culver City Municipal Code, likely expire and become void after five years, which, in this instance, is July 2026. Like other municipalities, the city has time limits to ensure timely development, and in order to prevent indefinite permits, five years is a long enough delay, and the city should not risk further delay. As we expressed in the letter our union submitted at the last meeting and resubmitted today, we urge that a condition be placed on this project requiring building permits to be obtained within one year. We should not allow the potential sorry, for as much as another five-year delay to build this hotel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Godinez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patrick Godinez, and for the sake of the public, I sit on the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, but my comments are coming from myself. First of all, I'd like to thank this company, you know, for trusting Culver City and selecting us as a potential plant. I think you're a gift to the city. And I understand, you know, all the building and all the construction and the views and everything like that, you know, in the neighborhood. But you also have to think of what's the other side? What if the hotel isn't built? You know, that area is really attracting, you know, folks like me, you know, that have been homeless, you know, before, and it hurts me to see the restaurants across the row. You know, they're hurting, and I really believe that, especially with the supposed corridor coming through, that this is a blessing and a place for people to go. Now, the success of the hotel is going to depend on us, the marketing, you know, how we approach it. Are we going to advertise in, you know, the airport? And, you know, and market towards the folks that aren't going to bring the RiffRap or any kind of negative factors, you know, involved with that. So, I really do believe that this is a blessing, and if the commission could expedite this development, I think it'd be great.
Thank you. Our last speakers are Rhonda Lucian, Susanna Benton, Edward Walkovitz, Jason Denegi, and Allison Tom. Rhonda is not on Zoom, and she is not here, so our next speaker is Susanna Benton.
Uh, good night, um, commissioners. I'm very disappointed that I wasn't able to attend the, um, other meetings. I live in, um, Segway. Um, it's not safe. Three times last year, I was almost hidden between Sepulveda and Jefferson. So it's very bad for the environment, it's very terrible for the traffic, and also, I don't know what is the safety, it's a lot of pollution already. So I have allergies every morning, every morning. Um, so, I'm not sure, I, I know what is, uh, I was wondering earlier why you guys accepted this condition. I mean, probably you guys not, because it was four years ago, and it's very bad, and we feel the consequences every day. Um, the four oh five freeway in the morning and the afternoon is so bad. So I don't know if you visited or you went to through that time between, uh, six afternoon to seven-thirty. So you can see the line between the four oh five inter to the freeway to, uh, Segway and sometimes Peyton Street. So it's awful in the evenings. You don't have any idea how much affected South Hill all the way, and how speedy it is between South Hill and Segway to go to the four oh five. So I'm very disappointed to this, and it's very, I'm a struggle constantly every day for my allergies, and this one sounds very nice hotel inside, but how about outside? How about our people who lives right there? I'm already twenty-one years there, and, like, you can see me already, I don't have time to go and look in something else to start all over. So I'm declining. So please consider my, um, our voices, listen to us, and go and see around this time, right now, you still can see traffic to go to the four oh five. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Wolkowitz.
Good evening, Chair Menthe and Commissioners. My name is Edward Wolkowitz, and I am the CEO of the Culver City Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the chamber endorsed the original Jeff project because it believes that hotel uses are extremely beneficial to a community. Uh, the hotel clients generally spend money in the community, and the, um, TOT, transient occupancy tax, is a particularly positive additional benefit. Uh, and given the financial situation of the city, uh, this project would be of significant benefit, uh, to the community. Um, I've lived in Culver City for forty-seven years, and I understand that in many areas the only buffer between residential and commercial uses is an alley. This is one of those situations. Uh, I believe that the applicant has mitigated the externalities to the best of its ability, and the, uh, the chamber would hope that the, uh, commission would approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last two speakers are Jason Denegi or Allison Tom, that were not here previously. No, they are not here, Chair. This, that is the last of our speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, that's the applicant's opportunity to present a rebuttal. So, if one of you would like to come up, you may.
I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge, and, uh, you know, once again, uh, we understand that anytime there's a new development in any community, there are certainly concerns that, uh, various stakeholders have. Uh, we have, uh, done our best to put forward a project that we believe is right for the site, right for the community, and, uh, works from all aspects, operationally for us, as well as for the community. Um, I, I think what might be helpful, rather than maybe address every concern, is maybe just, uh, request that Charity come up on our behalf. She's with BBNK. Uh, they're a city attorney to many cities, uh, around Southern California. I believe there's a conflict waiver here with this city, or there's no, uh, there's no conflict with the city, I should say. Uh, she's helped us on all of the SEQA from the beginning of the project, not only on this, but on many other projects that we've done in different communities. So I'd like to invite her up to just say a few words.
Sure. Good evening, Chair. Honorable Commissioners, thank you very much for having me. As Mr. Kadakia noted, my name is Charity Schiller. I am with Best, Best &amp; Krieger, and I provide SEQA and Land Use Council for, um, the applicant. So I would just echo the very fine summary that your city attorney gave at the beginning of this meeting, under State SEQA Guidelines, Section one-five-one-six-two. This is not a circumstance where this is a from-scratch entitlement. A very careful, thorough, um, entitlement process already happened for the Jeff Hotel. A very thorough analysis, complete with technical studies, was prepared and adopted by the city council in the form of a mitigated negative declaration just a few years ago. So the question is really, what has changed, and will the change result in any of those new circumstances or impacts, um, that are identified in State SEQA Guidelines one-five-one-six-two? And we would just point out, as you heard from, as summarized by staff and by the applicant, that this modification actually reduces impacts across the board. It has fewer rooms, it has fewer traffic trips, it has fewer noise impacts, it just is a less impactful development. And so we would agree with, um, your independent SEQA analysis and your staff's recommendation that there is substantial evidence here in the record supporting approval of the project, because the impacts are not worse, they're actually less than the existing entitlements that are on the site. Um, and so with that, I would just, um, also remind the commissioners, and perhaps for the benefit of the public, that the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted by the city included fifteen pages of single-spaced mitigation measures, and the applicant team has reconfirmed, and your staff has reimposed all those mitigation measures as requirements of this project. So all of those will be fully complied with as part of any development. And I think that's all we have, unless the commissioners have questions for the team.
Well, thank you. We may have some questions later on, but we're first taking motion to close the public hearing.
Can we still hear from the applicant after we close the public hearing?
My understanding is we can.
Okay.
We can ask questions as part of our call.
In the, in the past, we, I think we've taken it in different ways. In this instance, if you anticipate having questions for the applicant, I would recommend keeping the public hearing open, so that for ease of the record, we can identify which comments were provided during the public hearing.
All right, I'll go, I will go back to doing it that way, uh, and then we'll have to be reminded to close the public hearing before I get too far. So thank you for that. I will not take that potion, I appreciate that. Uh, but let's start with, um, Commissioner Black. Comments and questions?
Questions?
Comments, questions, whatever you'd like.
First, I want to thank everyone for their presentations, and everyone who has come out to the hearing and has sent us letters. Obviously, when there is construction immediately behind your house, that's very unsettling, and I'm sympathetic with these concerns. Uh, but a lot of what I heard is concern about traffic and safety within the neighborhood, and it sounds as though a lot of these issues already exist with people using Segway to avoid Sepulveda, and, uh, this alley is a very heavily-used commercial alley. So I kind of wonder whether, um, these issues should be addressed sooner rather than later with Public Works, um, because the hotel itself doesn't seem to significantly increase these problems, although I understand that they have committed to, uh, funding a traffic study should additional problems occur. But it sounds like it's already a problem. On a hotel like this, uh, would cause less traffic than a housing development, and although Culver City certainly, um, is very eager to build additional housing, given the proximity to the freeway, transient, uh, hotel guests are gonna experience, you know, less pollution than if we, um, were to approve a housing development so close to the freeway. Unfortunately, many of you have realized in a very personal way the impact of the freeway's air pollution. One of the letters commented that this new developer hasn't earned the community's trust. Um, this evening, you heard from them, um, that they own and manage their hotels over the long term and are committed to their neighborhoods, so, um, I hope that those concerns are somewhat allayed in comparison to the prior developer that couldn't get this project to work. Um, on the other side, um, we got a lot of letters about, uh, lagging projects, and we all know there's some big construction holes that have sat around Culver City for years and years, and that's pretty distressing. Um, so I'm sympathetic with the argument that we want this project to move ahead as quickly as possible. Um, I don't know enough about the implications of giving a one-year approval versus two. I'd like to hear what my colleagues think about that, uh, request that we've received. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Van Gaal.
Yes, um, my only concern here is that we may be, we're rehearing a prior-approved larger project now in its smaller form. That's fine, but if we say no to this, the alternative is for the applicant either to return back to the larger project, which I don't think is in the interest of many of the speakers today, or no project at all, which I don't think is anyone in, in anyone's interests either. Uh, I offer that before we go into deliberation.
All right, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones.
Thanks. Um, I have some questions for staff, actually. Um, mostly about stuff that we heard from the public commenters. Um, so someone mentioned that there was a gas station that used to be there. How is, so, they said, you know, you dig that up, there's, there's gonna be pollution, that makes sense to me, but how is that handled in the environmental process, or like during construction?
So the applicant team can probably give, uh, some more, uh, information on that, because they've been working with, uh, the, uh, the responsible party, uh, for the previous, uh, contamination, uh, to come up with a solution on how to clean up that soil. And of course, our best management practices, there are examples, you know, all over the city, all over the state, of, um, contaminated sites that need to be rehabilitated before they be constructed. So our best management practices, uh, the team has been working with, I believe, Chevron, uh, to, uh, figure out how to clean that up. Um, and, um, you know, of course, you know, in a way that does not pose an impact to the community.
Okay, thanks. And I'll ask in a second, but, um, um, there was also reference to, and this, this may be not something you're able to comment on, reference to the environmental study, I think the vibration part of it, looking at the distance fifty feet from, uh, a residence, but one of the commenters said her residence is twenty-nine feet. Is that something that was, that you know about?
So that's something that we discussed with the, uh, the applicant team as well. We discussed with ESA, their environmental consultant. Um, the, um, the impact of the vibration, um, would, uh, only be an issue if larger equipment got within, um, forty-five feet, forty, forty-five feet of that ADU that was constructed, uh, in the rear of the property.
See, okay. So this is, it was, I heard you mention that.
So, yeah, so the condition of approval, Condition of Approval sixty-four that you have in front of you tonight, um, that has been modified to address those concerns for the public, um, to make sure that, uh, the project is conditioned, so that large, um, equipment is kept further away from the site, uh, and that vibration is monitored during construction, so that if there is ever vibration that exceeds thresholds, um, they will need to stop and, uh, they will need to, uh, stop doing that particular activity and, uh, do a different, um, use a different method to continue whatever work they need to do.
Why, why is the condition forty-five feet, not fifty feet? If, if you know, if...
So, and this is something that ESA might be able to give more information on, but, um, the threshold for vibration, uh, is zero-point-four, and the fifty-foot, um, uh, perimeter is standard, a standard measurement. In this case, though, to stay below that zero-point, uh, point-zero-four threshold, uh, the, uh, the minimum requirement would be between forty, forty-five feet, depending on the type of work being done.
That, my, my, I, I guess I trust that, but, but my only concern is that if, if it was fifty feet, then it would be totally consistent with the, you know, other analysis, the earlier analysis. Um, but, uh, maybe, maybe someone else will comment on that later.
I think if we have, um, ESA, my, my cardon speak to that. Do you want to do that now?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my cardon with ESA. Um, uh, as, as was indicated here, the vibration levels, they're, they're a function of, of distance. So at fifty feet, um, what we had analyzed in the M and D, the vibration levels would be below the threshold. Since acknowledging the, the ADU unit, which is closer than fifty, we did a specific analysis to determine at what distance with those larger pieces of equipment need to be set back from that ADU unit in, in, um, in light of the vibration thresholds. So the distance, rather than being fifty feet, it is actually forty-five feet for some larger equipment, because it's, it's a little bit higher vibration, um, as, as the distance is shortened.
Okay, that, so that makes sense, but my, I guess my concern is that that's not in the environmental documents, I guess, that we're...
So we, we, we had analyzed the residential structures. Um, that ADU was, was, it was a garage when the M and D was being prepared.
Right.
So it's been after the fact identified as an ADU unit, so the, uh, project construction is now going to implement the conditions which we've discussed to ensure that the distances are maintained such that there is not a vibration impact at that ADU unit.
This, this may not be for you to comment on, but would it be a problem for it to say fifty instead of forty-five? Because then it would, then the other analysis, you know, we wouldn't have to say, okay, well, we did a new analysis, and it was forty-five, forty-five feet is enough. Um, if, if, if we required that it was fifty feet away, then, then the old analysis would still apply, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and the existing residential structures are much further than fifty feet, so they're well beyond the fifty feet. So this, it was, you know, it's, it was conservative to say that, hey, anything beyond fifty, we're pretty much, you know, we're in the clear, we're below the threshold, um, based upon the vibration levels that are produced by the construction equipment that's being used. So because this was within the fifty feet, we did a, a site-specific analysis to determine what is that distance that needs to be maintained. Um, and given the, the constraints of the site, it's, I think, important to analyze and, and identify that specific distance, um, to maintain, you know, the flexibility in the construction, but also eliminating the potential for that vibration impact.
I, maybe if I can hear from the applicant, or maybe you don't have this, you don't know this for sure, but would, would fifty, would changing forty-five feet to fifty feet make a difference? Presumably, you're okay with forty-five feet, if, if we have it before us, but I, I'm curious about fifty feet. And if you need to answer later, if you need to ask somebody, um, we can come back to it.
And, and I'll just add, you know, anything beyond the forty-five, we're further reducing the vibration level, right? So it's just that the forty-five is what is needed to meet that...
That threshold.
...threshold.
Gotcha, okay. Um, then I want to also ask, um, staff, um, about the alleys, if, what, so what I heard, and I, I didn't, you know, look into this, but what I heard from one of the commenters tonight was that the original traffic study recommended exit only north through that alley,
The original project, so, you know, this is a, the directions on the site, you know, it's not directly north, south, east, west.
Sure, yeah.
But basically, the idea for both iterations of the project, it'd be a left turn, a left turn out of the parking garage into the alley, and then another left turn onto Slauson to force cars, I guess we could call it in the eastward direction. And, and our mobility, mobility manager, Andrew Maximus, is on the call who can speak to that.
So it sounds like, I mean, what you're saying is that, that is contradicting what the, what the public commenter said, is that right?
The automobile, yeah, per discussion with mobility and traffic engineering, automobiles would exit on the alley and force left turn, and then a left turn again onto Slauson.
Okay. I see. And that's, and that's, you're saying is unchanged from the original project and now?
That's correct.
Okay. Then my, my last question is about the extensions of time. And, you know, Commissioner Black also alluded to other parcels in Culver City that have sat vacant for a while or have had, have had extensions. And I actually, you know, early on in my tenure in the planning commission, there was a situation where approving, our approval of the project would involve approving destruction of rent-controlled units, which was, at the time, had become illegal, or we'd have to replace them. But back when it, back when the, when the application was submitted, you know, it was, it was, it would have been legal to do that, and it was extended, 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 and then policy had changed and we had to apply the old policy. So I'm, I'm curious about what is the, what's looked at. It seems like there's a lot of, we've, we heard tonight a lot of policy reasons not to, you know, not to just keep granting the extensions, but like, what are, and I guess it's not you, or it's the director, right? But, but with, you know, working with the staff who's actually working on the project, right?
I think one thing to note is that the previous applicant received extensions and has one that is valid now. This is a new applicant, so it's, they are starting sort of from scratch, in a way, and our standard is two years. So staff didn't see a reason to reduce it, but.
Is, is there ever taken into consideration this kind of thing, though? Like, so for example, zoning is very different now than it was at the time, but this was originally granted. I mean, maybe we're not, you know, trying to think about every single state law that we get, you know, 100 each year, but what's, is that, is that taken into account, policy changes and that kind of thing?
Well, I mean, this, this project was approved under our previous zoning code because it was.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, the previous project was approved under the previous zoning code. This application was deemed complete under the old zoning code, so those apply.
I see.
So it's, you know, it's current with it, with just the previous zoning code, which is, you know, just happened in October.
Yeah.
Of a year ago.
And the, the proposed, so one of the, you know, letters we got had a proposed modification to the conditions of approval that would say, you know, this is it, you know, when this expires. I mean, that's not what it says, there was actual language there, but have, was that looked at? Have we considered that? And if, and if, and if the planning commission wanted to impose that condition, do you have thoughts about that?
It is under the planning commission's purview to do so. We have not done that on another project, as far as we know, but it's up to your discretion.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And then a couple of questions for the applicant. I guess first, did you, did you find out anything about the 45 versus 50, if that is something you have a problem with?
Yeah, you know, first of all, I wanted to say, Commissioner Jones, I thought you had very thoughtful questions. So they're all logical and practical and I, you know, sometimes, sometimes you go up and you get questions that are just, like, doesn't make any sense, right? These questions all make sense. So I'm going to try to address it the best I can. As you guys may imagine, I'm not a technical engineer, I'm a developer, but we have our team here who can get into more detail. But let's, let's kind of, I took a few notes here, so let's try to break down some of these items. The first item, as it relates, that you brought up was the vibration issue, right? The way this is written, the way I understand it, right, is that if, you know, if the vibration levels are detected to exceed .04 inch per second PPV, then drilling would be halted immediately, right? That's a requirement of the project, right? And, and at that point, the construction activities would be modified. There's many techniques that can be employed. Now, I'm not a, I'm not an expert in that, right? But some of the techniques are slowing the drilling, using alternate equipment or methods, right? But, but under no circumstance can the vibration level exceed .04 inch, and that's sort of a condition, right? Now, as far as the specific question of 45 to 50, you know, this was written by a noise consultant who was employed by ESA, which is the environmental consultant for the project, right? Why did they write, why they wrote 45 versus 50? I, I don't know. And we don't have the noise consultant here tonight, right? But what I would say is that, you know, I'm hesitant to accept a condition that I don't know the, the ramification of, right? Like, I don't know what, what does that mean to the project. I do think that this catch-all is, is, is clear in this, in this, in this, that it says that, you know, we just, we have to, we have to keep it under .04, right?
So you'll have, I mean, this is what this says, right? That you'll have a device at that ADU that's monitoring the vibrations, and if it gets to .04, you're stopping. I mean, not stopping, but you're doing, doing something.
Doing something to modify, yeah. And, and, and you said specifically at the ADU. That I don't know, I could, I would probably, you know, ask whether it's measured at the property or measured at the ADU. That distinction, I don't know, right?
It, it looks like it says, monitoring equipment used to ensure vibration levels at the nearest residential structure. So maybe, maybe there's a way to measure it.
Sure, that makes sense.
Elsewhere that, that tells you what that is at that structure, but.
Well, the ADU, I can just tell you, is very close to the wall, right? The, the proper, the alley wall. So I, I mean, I don't know this for a fact, but I would imagine that if you can measure it probably outside the alley wall, and if it exceeds .04 there, you know, we have to stop.
I see.
And we will, right? We will, we will, we will follow this and, and we will follow all, all of those conditions that, that were asked of us. If that 50 to 45 is, is something that we really, you know, want to drill into a little more, I would, you know, respectfully ask maybe ESA to come back to maybe address that if they have any more knowledge on that, right? But I, I can, I can say that we have read what has been added and we're, we're in, we're in compliance with that, meaning we'll accept that and we'll make sure that under no circumstance do we exceed the .04 at that residential structure.
Okay, okay.
To go on to a few other items that, that were brought up. The time extensions. So I'll come back to time extensions. Let me address the, the cleanup piece. So first and foremost, you know, the cleanup process is, is a very mechanical process in the state of California. It is probably the most regulated state as it relates to any kind of environmental cleanup, specifically fuel station cleanup, right? So, so part of this, part of this project, there's a condition mitigation measure, that's, that's MMHAZ-1, that requires the applicant or the developer, as well as any responsible parties, which in this case is Chevron, who's indemnified us, as well as, you know, all other constituents, that we have to complete what's called a soils management and remediation plan. This plan gets submitted to the LA Water Board, the LARWQCB board, and they have to review our plan as far as how we plan to measure, remove, treat, remediate any impacted soils and groundwater to a level determined by LARWQCB to be protective of human health and the environment and compatible with commercial use, in compliance with all applicable regulatory standards, and under supervision of a certified environmental consultant licensed to oversee such remediation. Additionally, the SMRP, which is the soils management remediation plan, will provide measures for the evaluation of vapor intrusion risk at the project site, and if necessary, modification of the project design or installation of what we call a vapor barrier that gets installed physically in the ground to, to, to ensure that the levels, you know, you don't exceed the threshold, right? So that, that's part of the mitigation measure, that's part of what we are planning to do. And when I say mechanical, it's, it's, you know, it's a step-by-step process, right? So first and foremost, the plan gets developed. Second, it gets submitted. It has to be approved. Once that plan is approved, that goes to the city. The city won't issue us building permits. They won't let us start the project if we don't have a plan in place. So if there's no plan to, to, that's approved, it's sort of a self-governing, you know, item, right, if you will, meaning that there's no way for us to proceed with the project without, without that plan done in place, right? So that's, that's, you know, and, and I do have, you know, I do have Robert Hanson, he's the principal environmental geologist with the Reynolds Group. They're a, one of the largest cleanup, environmental cleanup companies in the state, and they do actually work all over the United States. So he is on the line, so if you have further questions on that or more specifics, I certainly want Rob to step in to, to address that because he's going to be able to explain that better than I am. But that's a big risk for us going into the deal, and we analyzed it extensively to ensure that there is a path forward for us on the project that is going to work in a timely fashion, right? Now, the last thing I wanted to address is this concept of time and time modifications, right? So, you know, obviously, every developer may have a different motive, right? But generally speaking, we put a lot of money in, any developer does, and until we get this project open for business, we don't see any, any money out, right? There's no return on the investment. And so we are absolutely motivated to build the project as quickly as possible. That said, the two-year timeframe that is, is there for, for all applicants on all projects makes a lot of sense to me because, you know, a project like this, we have, we have a project design, right? We don't have structural engineering done, we don't have mechanical engineering, we don't have electrical engineer plumbing, we don't have architectural design, an interior design, acoustic study for the hotel inside operationally, we don't have IT low-voltage systems, et cetera. That process begins after we obtain our approvals, you know, and from that date, it generally takes our team about six months if we're razor-focused on it and we don't skip a beat to prepare what we call the first submittal to the building department. A project of this complexity would probably want to have some contingency of maybe a month or two to submit. From that process, our experience in the state of California, as it relates to obtaining the building permit, there's typically three, sometimes four rounds that go back and forth with the various stakeholders who review the plans. That process can take at a minimum six months, sometimes closer to nine months. At that point, we are deemed permit-ready, right? Now, we pay our fees, obtain financing, go to construction bid, get all of our bids organized, and then we commence construction. The idea of a giant hole or something in the property, if we are unsuccessful, is simply not feasible because we, we can't, we can't, we can't demolish the structures that are already there, the operating businesses, nor would we want to, because even though half of them are closed, there is some modest income coming out of the other half of them, right? So the idea that we would, first, the city wouldn't give us the permit to go demolish the structures without having all of our permits in place. Second, if, we have no incentive to demolish it. So if we were somehow unable to perform after putting in the money, buying the property, getting our plans approved, something happened in the overall economic market, macro market, we had another, you know, situation where we were stuck, our only remedy would come, would be to come in front of you and come in front of council to request some time, right? And then that, at that point, if the city has a different vision on it, then there's no obligation to extend that. So I, I'm just sharing that because at the worst, we'll have what's there today. At the best, we'll have our hotel. But our objective is to build this as quickly as possible, right? So that's sort of addressing that. I think the one-year period, it's, it's, there's no way we could break ground within a year. It just wouldn't be feasible for us in terms of the steps that we still have to take to get this project into the ground.
So the, have you, have you seen the letter that we, that we have with proposed language for the, so, I mean, it, I know, I don't read this as, as breaking ground, but maybe it's, it's effectively saying that. It says that the, an extension can only be requested, or, or, yeah, you can only request an extension if construction and building permits have been applied for by July 12, 2026, and issued by one year from the date of final approval of said land use permit. And I guess, as, as far as the, one question I have is, is why, why not build the Jeff Hotel, I guess? Why not, why not build the plans that are already approved?
You know, first and foremost, we think it's out of scale. We just think that design is, is not compatible or conducive with what, what makes sense. Secondly, as far as the way it's designed, we have a running joke inside our office, it's someone designed the SoFi Stadium, basically, right, as a, as a hotel. We, we just don't think it makes, it makes, it's not something that we would want to, we would want to build. We don't think that that's the right product for the market.
I see. So there, I'm trying to think if this was in a comment we heard or if this is just in this letter, but there was, I wrote down in my notes that somewhere it says, I think it was, it was in one of the public comments, let me find it to make sure. Oh, that, in the, maybe this is in the addendum to the environmental, that you anticipate commencing construction in spring 2026. But that doesn't seem like that's, that's your timeline.
Commencing in spring 26 wouldn't be feasible. I mean, for where we're at right now in the timeframe, again, from the time we get approvals, it will take us about six months to submit for CDs. It'll take at best about six months to obtain approvals from the city. From that point, it takes us about 90 days to go out to bid all of the subcontractors on the project, simultaneously work on obtaining financing and break ground. You know, in a, in a perfect world, if everything went as fast as possible with no delays along the way, this would be probably a minimum of 16 months from today for groundbreaking. But, you know, again, like, we, we're working on a hotel right now in Bishop, California, for example. We're on our 14th month trying to obtain our building permit from the city in that location. And it's, we were supposed to, we were trying to be in the ground, but we're on our 14th month now. And that's not, you know, synonymous with Culver City. We haven't ever applied to the, you know, for a building permit in Culver City, and I don't suspect it'll take that long. But these are complex projects and there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different city stakeholders who, who weigh in on it. And by the time you, you get those comments back, you, you address those comments with your consultant team, resubmit, there's just a, a sort of a process that, that this takes that makes a timeframe such as a year really just unfeasible. And I think that's the biggest challenge. But as far as like starting the project, again, I can, you know, we're of the philosophy that time is money and any day you're not earning a return on your money, it's costing you money, right? So from the money that's been invested already to date, the additional capital that's going to be invested, just the construction document process alone between all of the consultants in, you know, forward will be at least another million dollars of expense that we're putting in. There's no way to see this out unless we break ground, build the hotel open and are successful operating the hotel, right? So again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, there may be, there may be stories in Culver City and other communities where there's been concerns about developers starting projects, stopping. We've never stopped a project ever in our company's history that we've started because that's not how our, our, our deal is, our setup. It's set up where we have our equity, we have our debt, we close the loan, we construct the project, and the project doesn't stop till it, till it opens, right? There's, there's no, there's no opportunity for us to stop the project. So, so I just wanted to emphasize that again.
Thanks.
Because I know, I know it's a big concern, not only of yours or, but also the community. We've, we've seen the letters and we've heard from some of the stakeholders. We've seen the letters, and we've heard from some of the stakeholders here as well.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And to staff, I guess, as far as, if we did require this, you know, modified condition and some of the ability for the applicant to meet that timeline requires staff work to, I don't know exactly what is involved, but is that, is that, like, burdensome on staff to try to meet this timeline if the applicant is?
I mean, yes, from like, for the building review staff, I mean, building and safety, it would impact their, you know, staffing issues, and it sounds, based on my opinion, it sounds sort of imfeasible as well, from staff.
And another thing to add to this is, this isn't the only project that's coming in before building and safety. There are numerous other entitled projects. If they all came in the same day, I think it'd be very, very difficult for our building and safety staff to handle this all within that time period.
So I guess, one thing that I'm a little confused by is that it says, "Construction building permits applied for by that date." Is there work that is happening before it's applied for?
No, not from the building and safety perspective. I think, again, this applicant is different from the other applicant, and holding this applicant to the previous applicant and treating it like it's the same project didn't feel correct to us, but.
I, I mean, I take that point, but we have the same environmental review, and it's the same site, and to everyone who lives around there, like, it's the same thing. There's a hotel coming. I mean, I, no, I mean, it's, that's not like a legal argument, but this isn't, I think, there's not like a legal standard that's deciding whether we, say, you know, put limits on the ability of this product to have further extensions, unless there is, that you want to tell me about.
So I think there's two things that I want to talk about here. One is that the proposed condition establishes a different standard than our code. So our code gives applicants two years to exercise the use, and a use isn't deemed exercised until they've commenced actual construction after obtaining any required construction permit. They have to get much further along in the process than just applying for a permit within those first two years. So I think that's something important to consider here because we would be changing the, not only the time period from what's allowed by the code to something different, something potentially lesser, but we'd also be changing the standard under which city staff would be evaluating compliance with this condition of approval. And it may not have the intended effect. Someone could theoretically submit a building permit application and go through 40 rounds of comments on it and end up not having exercised the use within the two-year time period that's anticipated by our code. So that's one thing I want to point out, is there could be some unintended consequences with changing from a, I'm going to say like a results-based deadline, like we have in our code, to an application-based deadline, like is being proposed in the condition of Separately, I think it could be a little confusing because our, the proposed condition of approval, like I said, would look at the date that the building permit is submitted. Extensions that are processed by staff are processed using our municipal code standards, so we'd potentially be switching between the two standards. So those are the two things that I wanted to raise with you as you're thinking about this.
Okay. If there's, is there, is there a way to, if we're concerned about more extensions without progress being made, is there a way you would modify what was proposed to make it easier, you know, more easier to apply, not, I don't know, reduce unintended consequences?
So we, the commission could change that, the initial time period. So right now, the code assumption is, the permit expires two years from the date of approval, unless the conditions of approval say otherwise. So you could potentially either extend or reduce that two-year initial period.
I see. Whereas this doesn't change that period, but just changes when you can extend at that
Current planning manager, Stadniki, points out that the condition, the proposed condition actually has two parts. I only saw the first part when I read it quickly before. So the proposed condition says, "Building permits are applied for and..."
Issued.
"...the city issues it."
Yeah.
And I do think that that second part is problematic.
Yeah.
Because there could be, just due to workload or unexpected absences within the building and safety department, unexpected delays in the, in the application process.
Okay.
Also, I just, having this July 12, 2026 date, I believe that's tied to the previous application and extension. So it wouldn't be that date, it would be a year from today, if it was approved today. So it wouldn't be tied to July 26 because that wouldn't, that's not a year. That's not even one year.
And I don't want to speak for the applicant, but what I heard from the applicant is that even hitting that July 12 date for a building permit submission would be very, very difficult.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I don't want to be in the position necessarily of suggesting how the applicant runs their business. I think what we should be focused on, or what I would recommend commission focus on is more the result. What the, more in line with what our code provides, which is that you're going to have been issued the building permit by a date, and that time period between now and the date that you issued it, you work out, you know, within your own business needs, how to get your permit application in on time to meet that deadline.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would, I would support adding this condition, removing the "and issued" and changing the July 12, 2026 to November 12, 2026. That's my comments.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Chair Manthi. I neglected to report that I did meet with the applicant.
You know, we actually all neglected to talk about, so let's all go through and ask one by one if we've actually met with the applicant. And Mr. Black, you did.
I did not meet with the applicant.
I did meet with the applicant.
I did.
I did not.
All right, thank you. I know. Vice Chair Carter.
Okay. Thank you for this attention to detail. And I want to thank all the neighbors and everyone who wrote in, and I'm glad we're looking carefully at this because it is right next to the neighborhood. I do believe that, I like that it's a smaller project than the Jeff, and I, I want to believe that, I mean, it's always hard to have construction next to your house, but I think, I think this property will fit in that location. And I also was thinking about the timeline. I do think that they're financially motivated to get it done, and I wouldn't want to put in a timeline that, like they were saying, creates a problem down the line. What if they're like a month away, and then, and then what would happen with, I feel like it creates a lot of what-ifs, and to some degree, it sounds like part of it is the city and what they have on their plate. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. I think my questions have largely been asked, so I guess, I just want to say, you know, overall, you know, I realize we have neighbors who don't want this built at all, and we have others who want it built much more quickly. And that always puts you in a bit of a dilemma trying to figure out what to do. You know, when I look at what our job is, I see that the prior commission and the prior city council approved this project, they approved the, sorry, they approved the Jeff project, which is larger, and we are being asked to approve a smaller version of it. And if you want something to be built, this is the one that's going to get built because although the applicant didn't expressly address it, I assume it's also less expensive, and that is almost certainly part of the motivation for getting this done. The other project is larger, it almost certainly costs more, it's got another subterranean level, and so that's what's going to happen. But the other thing that I want to say is, I know there's often been a talk about wanting to have affordable housing, and I will comment that those projects are even bigger. If you live in this neighborhood, if this were not a hotel, and someone were to buy this property and to put in affordable housing, you'd be talking seven, eight stories, easily. That's what we do here every month. That's what the density bonuses permit. And I really do understand, from the fear, the apprehension of having this building nearby, at the end of the day, that is what's in the zoning, and, you know, fundamentally, it's up to us to make a review of these environmental documents, and they are very extensive. You know, to belittle this mitigated negative declaration as insufficient or somehow inferior, well, there's just nothing necessarily better about an EIR than a well-prepared mitigated negative declaration. On this one, I think it goes through what you would see in many EIRs. I believe it shows without any serious challenge that any potential significant impact can be mitigated or reduced to less than significant, and in fact, it's smaller than it was the first time. I do say that, acknowledging that people are going to be upset no matter what we do, and perhaps more people will be upset if we approve this project than not. But on balance, I think the applicant has shown, and the environmental documents show us, that the impacts can be reduced below what is considered significant as a matter of law. I think on balance, it's good for the entirety of the community, and I want to acknowledge that this portion of the city doesn't have some of the newer fractions and amenities that some parts of the city do. It really stands out that Sunkist Park has been left out of many of our neighborhoods. So not some people like it that way, others don't like it that way. So I also would not impose any additional conditions on the time here. Two years is, the two years we have under the code is, is actually rather swift as it is. I would be reluctant to penalize the new owner for anything the old owner did or didn't do. And this, again, if the idea is to get this built, I actually don't think imposing this condition is going to help. I think this condition will actually make it harder to construct. So those are my comments. Any additional questions? Let's take a motion to close the public hearing first.
Who moved? Thank you. Commissioner Van Galen moved, second. Thank you. And second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. So. So we can have further debate after the motion is made in second, but I'd like to see if there is a motion. And the motion would be that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-P015, one, adopting an addendum to the 2021 mitigated negative declaration per SEQA, and two, approving site plan review and administrative use permit request for Project P2024-0246-SPR/AUP, subject to the conditions of approval as stated in the resolution.
Chair, with the addition of the...
Yes, as amended by those conditions that we saw earlier today.
Moved by Commissioner Van Galen, second by Chair Manthi.
Any further discussion before we proceed to vote?
I, so I'm not hearing, you know, more than me, I guess, in support of the, limiting the extensions, but I want to just say again that I think that, you know, we've seen, I mean, first of all, this, the fact that this site has sat vacant for so long, or not vacant, but has been in limbo for so long, we have vacant sites in the city that, you know, are, that if they were developed today, would be housing, but, you know, 10 years ago, they were like, you know, let's put up something else. And we've seen negative effects from these, like, extensions. And if we're not, I don't know, reining them in, I don't know what's going to happen. I'm concerned that this project, you know, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the history, why the, you know, prior owner didn't develop it if it was infeasible, why the, why the new developers aren't using the old one. Was that infeasible? Could those conditions affect this? And then, you know, nothing happens to that lot for years. I take the city's issues, potentially concerned about their ability to make this timeline. I proposed, you know, removing the "and issued" requirement so that it wouldn't be on the city, it would be on the applicant, and extending additional time. So it'd be, you know, a year from tonight rather than in July. But I won't, unless there's other support, I won't, I won't make the motion to amend.
All right. Let's call the question. Let's please take the vote.
You're moving.
So we haven't known.
There was a motion, and there was a second, and we're just going to take the second.
Yeah, we're just going to vote on the motion that...
Oh, on the first one?
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that. All right, let me just pull it back up. All right, please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We will move on to Item PH2, our second public hearing of four this evening. And who's handling that for our staff? Are you ready to give your report? All right, please proceed.
All set. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Gabriel Barreras, senior planner, and I'll be presenting on a proposed zoning code amendment that we're recommending for approval for, to continue aligning our local zoning code with recent state laws. So why, and why now? Ongoing zoning code amendments are essential for maintaining consistent and effective regulations that respond to market conditions, housing needs, best planning practices, and conformance with recent state laws. All of the following amendments and related state laws were presented to the City Council's Standing Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee on August 26 and September 10 of this year, and were requested to be incorporated as amendments tonight for recommendation. As detailed in this presentation, the proposed amendment specifically advanced the city's housing element goals to promote housing production and expand homeownership opportunities while strengthening the city's ability to enforce high-quality housing standards. This zoning code amendment will further implement four recent state laws as listed above. Senate Bills 684 and 1123 provide an optional provision to permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in subdivisions or ministerial lot splits. units, or ADUs, in subdivisions or ministerial lot splits. Assembly Bill 1154 enacted on October 10 by the governor, provides relief from a previous regulation that required property owners to reside on a property with a junior accessory dwelling unit, or a JD JADU, without exception. Lastly, Assembly Bill 1033 was passed in 2023, but it provides local jurisdictions with the option to allow the separate sale of ADUs as condominiums. Now to give more details on each of these bills. SB 1123 and 684 were actually codified in our municipal code in May 2025. They allow ministerial approvals of up to 10 homes or lots on vacant and underutilized single-family and multifamily lots. The zoning code amendment before you tonight would implement an optional provision permitted by each bill to allow the addition of one new ADU per lot created by 684 or 1123. Note, all future developments from this bill are still subject to the underlying ADU development standards such as setbacks and height. The image on the slide provides a conceptual example of how a lot could be subdivided with two of the homes having either an ADU or a JD JADU attached. The next bill in this zoning code amendment incorporates Assembly Bill 1154, which modifies owner occupancy requirements for junior accessory dwelling units. Previously, state law required that a property owner reside in either the primary single-family home or in the attached JADU. Through AB 1154, a property only requires owner occupancy of the ADU of the JADU if it is dependent on shared sanitation facilities with the single-family residence. If the sanitation facilities in the bathroom are fully separated as diagrammed on the site on the slide, excuse me, the JADU and the primary residence may both be rented out and occupied by someone other than the property owner. This added flexibility supports the ongoing housing crisis by expanding housing and occupancy options. Lastly, the zoning code amendment will codify an optional provision of Assembly Bill 1033, passed in 2023. This bill allows local jurisdictions to permit the sale of ADUs separate from the primary dwelling as condominiums, with the goal of further expanding homeownership opportunities at a smaller scale. The bill requires that ADUs are subdivided and sold as condos or condominiums. It is applicable to attached and detached ADUs, but not JADUs. They must be served by all utilities and public amenities, and the ADUs are subject to all existing ADU development standards, the Davis Sterling Act, and the Subdivision Map Act of California. The proposed zoning code amendments related to the revisions of SB 684 and 1123 are exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, pursuant to Public Resource Code 21080 dot 17, which exempts the adoption of ordinances approving zoning code amendments related to ADUs that are in conformance with state law. Additionally, AB 1154 and AB 1033 are also exempt from SEQA as neither bill increases or changes the development potential or the number of ADUs possible on a given site. Therefore, pursuant to SEQA Section 15183, future potential development was already analyzed and addressed by the General Plan 2045 EIR, and no further environmental review is required at this time. In closing, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed resolution recommending the city council approve a SEQA exemption and the amendments to allow accessory dwelling units in qualified lot subdivisions, remove owner occupancy requirements for junior accessory dwelling units, and permit the separate sale of accessory dwelling units as condominiums. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Any quick clarifying questions?
Yes, I have one. Could you return to Slide 5, please?
I will try. Can we have? Okay. Slide 5, you said?
Yes. Can you confirm this is a JADU? I thought a JADU required an internal connection to the primary residence. Is that not the case?
This, a current JADU does require internal connection. This is a diagram only, just just showing how sanitation facilities would be separated. This diagram was was modified based on our ADU guidebook.
So as.
But yes, you're correct. It should it will have a it can't have an internal connection to the single-family home.
I see. But as drawn, is it still a correct JADU?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. That's that's due to my understanding.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. May I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
If I could just clarify, it is optional. So it can have an internal, a JADU can have an internal connection, but it does not have to have an internal connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to open is moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Chairman Thie. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have two speakers registered. And our first speaker is Michael Colick. Three minutes, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi. Yes, I'm just Brian Zinn of Culver City, and I work in real estate. And I'm very aware of the problems of buying a starter home for young people. And I read an article about, you know, LA is the fourth most unaffordable city in the US right now. San Jose was number one most affordable. And San Jose is currently the only city in California to enact AB 1033, which allows the sale of separate of ADUs as condos. And I feel like Seattle should be following that path because we need more starter homes. And the thing that's being built the most right now are ADUs. And for like me and, you know, my friends, stuff like that, that's the easiest way to get into the rat race and start on the path of homeownership is to buy a starter home. I don't want to buy a condo. I want like something I can walk up to, you know, and have a detached house, maybe like a little yard, you know, something that feels like a home. And that is, you know, like detached property. And I really don't need much, you know, something that is thousand square feet, eight hundred square feet, seven square feet is amazing. But something where it's just a walk-up, you know, detached home for my dog to run around. And the only way that kind of stuff is going to happen is probably through this ownership of ADUs instead of needing to rent. And so something like this would go a long way for helping me establish myself in Culver City. I wish other cities would do it. Culver City is so much more forward-thinking on things like this. And with like the general plan update, that's been exemplified through the the transportation improvements that the city has made. And I think this follows very much so in line with those objectives and the objectives of the city of Culver City. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Godinez. I believe he has left chair. So that would be the end of our speakers.
All right. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chair Chair Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Comments, discussion with Commissioners? We'll start with you, Commissioner Black.
Thank you. Well, as our speaker just said, I think this is a wonderful idea, and I support it.
Commissioner Van Galen.
I support this as well without comment.
Mr. Jones.
I I support this as well. I just want to say I'm grateful to staff, not just for quickly implementing these state laws, but looking for opportunities to take advantage of of state laws that let us do this. So thank you.
I also support it wholeheartedly. So thank you.
All right. Well, I can do math here. So the fact that I support it too means it's going to go pretty well. But I did want to ask a couple of questions for my benefit and probably the benefit of the public. The part of this that is voluntary is is the sale of ADUs as condos. The rest is required, right?
On 684 and 1123, the option to add or to to allow for an ADU to, if I divide my property, and I build a new home, and I add an ADU to it, the ADU portion of that is optional right now. So we would be opting into that portion for 684 and 1123. For AB 1033, that bill is completely optional. And we would be one of, we would probably be the fifth or sixth city in the state to adopt it. So it's not widely adopted, but it's it's a very powerful tool for extending homeownership opportunities at a smaller scale. And then lastly, AB 1154, we are obligated to implement by January 1. We're just getting ahead of the state on that.
And I did want to ask a question, maybe just for my own edification. I understand selling an ADU as a separate standalone parcel. I'm less clear how it functions as a condominium when there's only one of them.
Right. So we received this question a bit. And the way I describe it is a lot of these state bills that are enabling housing, they arrive at similar conclusions. So so, you know, allowing folks to build more housing and to extend either more renter or more homeownership opportunities, right? Under the ADU as condominiums, an applicant would would first convert their, you know, propose to convert their garage or build a new ADU. They would also submit a condo map at the same time. The underlying property is owned by the primary house and property owner. The the structure portion of the ADU is now condominium, and so a new owner can buy that piece. I described it earlier today to someone saying that there may be different life reasons why folks may want to pursue an ADU as opposed to subdividing a property and selling a lot fee simple. So, you know, an example might be a family who owns a property and wants to build a house in the back for their young children or their elder parents, and allow them to stay established in the owner market. Then, you know, years down the road, if they want to revisit the condo option and and recapture that piece of property, or convert it to a more formal lot subdivision, they have that option. But these are all tools to extend homeownership opportunities, and it just depends on on the preference of the of the property owner.
All right. No other questions. I'm happy to take the motion. I'll read the motion so you all don't have to. The motion would be to adopt resolution number 2025 dash P 16, recommending that city council adopt an exemption pursuant to SEQA Section 15183 and Public Resources Code Section 21080 point 17, amend CCMC Chapter 15.10 to allow accessory dwelling units in qualified lot subdivisions, amend CCMC Section 17.400.095 to remove owner occupancy requirements for junior accessory dwelling units, and adopt CCMC Section 17.400.096 to permit the separate sale and conveyance of accessory dwelling units as condominiums. Does anyone make that motion?
Thank you. Who moved?
Commissioner Jones.
And the second? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Van Galen. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Thank you. Who is doing PH three?
So we'll take a staff report from PH three, whatever. We're ready for that. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Troy Evangelou, Advanced Planning Manager. The two zoning code amendments being proposed tonight are intended to implement our housing element and bring us into compliance with state law. Before we move on, I want to have a quick refresher regarding affordability levels. So shown here are the different tiers of affordability levels. It's all based off of the area median income. And one of the common things we do is when we talk about low-income properties, it typically includes everything from low and beyond. So low would also include the very low category and the extremely low category. So just keep that in mind as we talk about lower-income properties throughout the rest of this presentation. State law AB 1397 already requires ministerial approval for any project that proposes 20% affordable to low income and is identified for low income on our adequate sites inventory. Our housing element, Measure 4B, goes further and extends this ministerial approval for any project that provides 20% low income, regardless of its inclusion on our sites inventory. So this proposed code amendment would effectuate the measure that we have in our housing element. State law AB 1397 also requires that mixed-use projects identified for low-income housing on our sites inventory include a minimum 50% residential. HCD has sent us a letter requesting that we add this requirement to our zoning code. So this amendment would demonstrate compliance with this HCD requirement. Staff finds the proposed zoning code amendments are exempt from SEQA because it both implements required state law regulations and does not intensify any land use development allowed in the zoning code. And staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the following resolution. That concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I believe we, Vice Chair.
Okay. Should we open it up to the public hearing? Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I just moved.
Okay. Second, my my screen went off. Oh, wait, there it is.
He's back.
Okay. All right. So thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Van Galen. Please vote.
Chairman Thie, I'm waiting. I can take a voice vote if you like.
My screen had reverted to the general iPad screen.
Thank you. I got it.
I thought you did.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Carter, for covering for me for the very short staff report. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker registered. It's Emily Fisher.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
I don't have my notes with me, so I'm not exactly sure. So, I'm going to use my time for something else. I have a question for the commission. Have any of you read in its entirety the general plan, either the new one from last year or the one that existed for decades prior to that? Anybody?
We don't generally do question and answer to the commission. So, you're allowed to make public comment, but we don't ask those questions to commissioners.
Okay. Well, that said, but one of the things that I can recommend that you do is to read that, to read the existing one, which is available online through the website, and the current one. And one of the things that you still need to learn about is air pollution and where Culver City stands in relation to other locales. We are surrounded by two major freeways, but it is not just the freeways that provide the pollution. It is the backup, the congestion that is caused by inferior transportation routes. We are a very common transportation route to bypass the San Diego Freeway going north and south. The worst of the pollution exists in the morning. We are well past ozone levels of any other area around us. In fact, worse than most of Los Angeles, even though it's the entire metro area. But one of the things that you may or may not know is that every time that you increase the density and add more people to the living conditions, anywhere within 500 feet of a major roadway, you are affecting all of us and shortening the lifespan of every person, causing not just lung disease, but also developmental disease in young children, especially attention deficit, heart attacks, and strokes, and also miscarriages. So, I think that you all, I'm just suggesting this, that you all need to learn, as I have studied for months, about ozone levels and the detriment it is to our health. And every time you put more people on these roadways and back it up, I can give you some documentation. I didn't bring enough copies today, but I brought one that I can pass to you and have you look at and share with one another. I just didn't have time to print them before I came here tonight. And hopefully, you will learn something. Either that or if I have your email addresses, I can email it to you if I'm provided with those.
I believe you can hand that to our clerk here, and she can make sure that members of the commission.
I didn't highlight the areas that I wanted you to see, but I know that the other thing about this exemption is that is that there is not enough, everything that is being approved is less than a certain percentage. There may be 400 units and maybe 20 of them are for low-income housing. And so, we're not really solving the affordable housing crisis here.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Fisher, if you email that to me, I will distribute it to the commissioners.
Our next speaker is Joseph May.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great. My name is Joseph Cohen May, and I am the Director of the Los Angeles Housing Production Institute. I am in strong support of this item, and I hope you move forward with it. One thing I want to mention is while the specifics of this is designed to follow state housing element law and specifically the 20% affordable threshold for lower-income rezoning sites, this proposal of following the housing element would allow this approval process for all sites in the city that allow multifamily residential development. One thing is that the housing element law sort of being an older part of law in California, the affordability percentages don't line up very well with state density bonus affordability percentages. And a lot of projects are using the state density bonus to include more affordable housing at different affordability levels. So, I would encourage the commission to consider for the, in addition to allowing it for 20% affordable, also allow it, this process for projects that are maximizing affordability at combination of the very low income and the moderate income combined density bonus, using the state density bonus law. And that is combining a very low income and a moderate income piece, and that's based how, under state law, how you maximize the density bonus. And that would, I think, be beneficial to getting more housing and more affordable housing built in Culver City. So, I would suggest that you consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers.
All right. May I take a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Sorry, who moved?
I seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. Comments or questions from the commission, beginning with Commissioner Black?
I have one for staff.
Okay. Please go.
You're off.
We'll go back to you first, Commissioner Van Gell.
No, no, no. You just turned your microphone off. There you go. There you go.
Okay, there we go. If we're losing SEQA here, what is in place to, what kind of environmental checks are in place? Does that question, like, there's still a checklist that people need to go through, right? Here's the thing. I understand housing, it's so important, we need it. But the environmentalist in me, and the one getting Sierra Club emails, you know, there's so, I just want to, I wish I understood better. Like, we're not throwing away all environmental protections, right? Like, is there still a checklist that will, that a project has to go through before it's approved?
I'll jump in on this one. So, a project would still have to comply with objective design standards, objective standards that the city imposes. However, as a ministerial project, it would be exempt from SEQA, and that's coming directly from the state. So, the city would only be able to impose the objective standards that are established through our general plan, including the housing element and our zoning code.
And does this apply to, I'm sure it was in the presentation, but does it apply, are we talking about only developments with a certain number of units? Or are we talking about all?
It would be for all multifamily.
All multifamily. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Van Gell?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I have one comment, which is this made me look at the housing element again, and in particular, the adequate sites inventory, because this implements the state law requirement of minimum 50% residential requirement for sites inventory properties. And in, also in the adequate sites inventory, it specifies a minimum density for a number of the sites that are on that inventory, and a minimum density of 20 dwellings per acre. Now, most of these, or many of these, already in our zoning code update, were set at a minimum density of 20 dwellings per acre. Some of them were set at a higher minimum density, 30 dwellings per acre, but not all of them have a minimum density set in our zoning code. And I don't know if it's something that we could do here as part of this attempt to, you know, finish implementation of the housing element, to add that along the lines of the language that references that inventory. It could say something like, you know, sites designated as having a minimum density in the, of 20 dwellings per acre in the housing element adequate sites inventory, you know, shall be treated as having that. I don't know. Something like that, a reference to that. No more, no less, but yeah. Is that something that could be done tonight?
So, currently, the items proposed don't increase or change densities, and they're in line with more of the type of approval that goes through, whether it's a ministerial approval, that type of thing. Establishing a new minimum density in the zoning code would be something that we would want to take a closer look at, see if there's any type of SEQA implications, those types of things. So, I don't think it would be appropriate put in this particular.
Well, would the, you know, SEQA analysis for the housing element already have done that? Because it was in the adequate sites inventory for the housing element?
If I could jump in, I think that's something that Troy and I talked about earlier. Staff would have to look at that more closely. To put this in a broader context, the proposals that are being brought forward by Advanced Planning tonight are required by state law, required for compliance with state law. The proposal that you're suggesting, which would be increasing the minimum density for our, what is it, mixed-use one zone, isn't required by state law because none of those sites are anticipated to accommodate our lower-income housing units. So, they don't fall under the same mandate that we're talking about tonight. From a practical perspective, I would recommend doing, imposing a minimum density on these sites changes the development rights of the property owners for these sites. And I would recommend, before pursuing that path, conferring with those property owners to make sure they agree with it, because they could have plans hypothetically, someone could have a plan right now to build two units on a site that with the minimum density would be at three units or four units. And it's been our, it's been our process as we've developed our sites inventory to confer with our property owners to make sure they want to be on our sites inventory, that we're not going to be changing any development plans or imposing the city's will on them without their consent. And I think that's especially important right now. It's hard to believe it, but we are, you know, three years away from, or four years away from our next RENA cycle. And we're going to be out there again, asking property owners to consider whether they want to be on our updated sites inventory that we're looking at after our new RENA cycle. That's not a legal issue. That's more of a
Sure.
a practical issue. But if we were to impose a minimum density now, we haven't studied what the impacts would be to those, I think it's like 10 parcels that are on our sites inventory here. And we haven't studied whether this would fall under our general plan EIR without looking at it. I think there's a decent chance that it would, but we haven't looked at that to date.
So, the part about ministerial approval for housing projects with 20% affordable housing for sites that are not in our sites inventory, that's not required by state law, right?
It's not, but we have a program in our housing element that says that we will impose that. So, the action tonight is consistent with that program that was developed four years ago, when our housing element was being prepared.
But those, I mean, it would be consistent with the adequate sites inventory to do this 20, you know, dwellings per acre minimum density?
It would. It appears nowhere else in our housing element as a program. And we don't have any record of having discussed that with these property owners as part of the sites inventory generation.
So, we asked them if they wanted to be on the sites inventory. We put them in as 20 dwellings per acre, but we don't know if we mentioned that to them.
I don't have any, I haven't seen any record of that. And I, and so, that is what gives me pause about doing something without their input tonight. It wasn't noticed as a potential action tonight, and there has been no direct outreach to those property owners.
Now, HCD, is there any concern that they're, they would consider that part not implemented because we're not, we said we would do it and we aren't? That's kind of, kind of what's driving this, I mean, in my mind, that like, we sent them this housing element and the sites inventory, and that's one of the commitments that's there is, you know, these ones will be treated as having, again, it's like, there are some that by, under state law, we have to treat as having this 20 dwellings minimum density, but we are doing it for more than that. And are we going back on that now by not implementing that part of it?
Let me just add that we're actually working pretty extensively with HCD at the moment. We have a pro-housing application in, and part of that, we've met with HCD at least three or four times for hour-long sessions where they walk through every program in the housing element and try to figure out how we're implementing it to score us for our pro-housing application. So, we've been in detailed discussions with HCD on all of our various housing element topics, in addition to this letter that we received, some HCD separate from our pro-housing designation, where they're looking for compliance with this particular aspect. And so, this has not been an issue. HCD has not been shy with telling us what they want us to update and what they want us to fix. This has not come up as an issue for them.
Okay. So, it's something that we're hoping they don't ask us about? I mean, I'm trying to understand why we're not implementing it, I guess.
I don't think it's something that we're trying to not implement. You're correct, it does show up in our, in our housing inventory with a minimum unit dwelling size. As Christina mentioned, when we did our larger analysis and set up the entirety of the housing element, we did choose certain items that we thought about, that we wanted to follow up on and look at establishing minimum densities for. And we did have a couple of programs that looked at that as well. We had a program that looked at if you're a higher-density multifamily neighborhood, that we want to consider it for establishing a minimum density so that you don't get a small development that comes in, you get a substantial development on a property that can handle substantial housing. And so, through that process, what we did, and again, through implementing the zoning, which actually puts in the minimum densities, you know, the general plan doesn't establish minimum density, it's done through the zoning. And so, through that process, we did establish minimum densities for our larger categories, mixed-use high, mixed-use medium, medium residential, high residential, again, those larger sites. It was a thoughtful implementation of requiring higher dense, or minimum densities on the larger sites. And likewise, when it came to some of these smaller sites, including these particular ones in mixed-use one, we decided not to establish minimum densities because as you get to a smaller scale site, like something that would accommodate a duplex or a triplex, we didn't want to inadvertently stifle, like Christina said, a project where someone buys a single-family home, and they want to demo it, rebuild it, but it's zoned for a minimum density of two units. And now, they can't. They're, you know, they have to stick with what they've got because it would be non-conforming, because they wouldn't be able to build two. So, it gets a little into the weeds and a little detailed, but the end result is, we did analyze it, and we purposefully did not implement a minimum density for the M1 zones through the process. And it wasn't us not implementing what was in the housing element. Again, we chose specifically higher-density areas to look at establishing minimum densities for.
Okay. So, when you say you've studied this, it was the MU1 zone, but maybe not, not these particular, I mean, you were looking at it as a whole, it's got all these smaller parcels, but maybe not these particular ones?
Those ones are pretty small as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you look at the
And they all anticipate consolidation. I think all of them do. Yeah. They all anticipate consolidation. Okay. I didn't think I would be convinced, but I'm convinced. All right. Thanks.
All right. You know, I will say, when I saw this, my first comment was that I had not seen a project that was 20% affordable. my first comment was that I had not seen a project that was 20% affordable or more. I'd seen a couple of 100% affordables come through, but otherwise, it's usually in the 10%-ish range most of the time. So I suspect we won't see a whole lot of this going through. Always makes me queasy, though, because ministerial review means it doesn't come here. It means the public doesn't see that much of it. And although you may sit out there in the public and wonder, what good does public comment do? In fact, these projects change as a result of interaction between the public and staff, and that culminates in this process. I mean, you take away this process, you actually take away a lot of public input. So I'm sorry to see it go, but I understand the state's not giving us much choice. I wish the state would stop doing this to us because there is value to having people be able to talk about what's in their neighborhoods, be able to meet with developers, and be able to talk about what might happen around them. So those are my comments. Do I have any motion? Hold on. Pull up the motion here, excuse me.
Just, I just wanted to make one clarification. These projects will still require a community meeting, and their decision will be appealable to Planning Commission.
Okay, well, so we're not gone, just outside line. All right, so I believe the motion here is to adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve Zoning Code Amendment P 2025-0229-ZCA to implement the 2021 to 2029 housing element and comply with state housing element law. Can I have a motion, please?
Thank you, I have it moved by Commissioner Jones. Can I please have a second? Thank you, I have a second by Vice Chairman. Please vote. Motion passes with five ayes.
Okay, now we're coming to PH4, which is 5757 Uplander Way. May I have any staff report, please? Mr. Chaco, you're handling that?
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your continued attention, two and a half hours and counting. My name's Pierre Chaco, I'm Senior Planner with Culver City Planning Department, and I'm the Project Manager for item PH4, a mixed-use project proposed at 5757 Uplander Way. This is a seven-story mixed-use development on an 8.3-acre site in the mixed-use high or MUHD zone with 1,077 units and 5,772 square feet of community-serving commercial use. The existing two-story office commercial buildings and associated site improvements on the site will be demolished. Pursuant to state density bonus law, the project has been administratively approved for density and other bonus incentives. The project proposes 78 very-low-income units, which enables a 30% density bonus of 243 units on top of the 834-unit base density that's permitted, allowing a total of 1,077 units. Per state law, the project received a height concession of 37 feet 6 inches for a total height of 93 feet and 6 inches. Additionally, the project received a waiver or a reduction of loading area height clearance, reduced from 14 feet to 12 feet 9 inches. As you can see from the location map, the project site occupies almost an entire block bounded by Bristol Parkway, Hanham Avenue, and Uplander Way. To the west, across Bristol Parkway, are two-story office uses. Additionally, Culver City Fire Station Number 3 and two-story medical offices are directly abutting the western edge of the site, all in MUHD zoning. Six-story office uses are located to the north in the Corporate Point Campus, across Hanham Avenue, and it's in mixed-use medium zoning. One-to-two-story office uses are located to the south across Uplander Way in MUHD zoning, and two-story business park uses to the east across Uplander Way, also in MUHD zoning. I'm going to spend a little time on this slide, the site plan, which shows the mixed-use project organized in six buildings sitting on top of a podium of two to three levels of semi-subterranean parking, with two buildings on each of the three proposed parcels, which correspond to three phases of implementation. The above-grade portion of the parking structure is wrapped at the ground level by residential units along the street furnaces to screen it from view. Ground-floor residential units have patios or stoops that are accessible from the sidewalk along all furnaces to enhance the street activation. A publicly accessible central paseo, accessible via ADA ramps, is at the second level, connecting north-south from Hanham Avenue to Uplander Way. The proposed ground-floor commercial or retail space will face Hanham Avenue at the entrance to the central paseo. The project proposes about 132,000 square feet of onsite open space, including the central paseo, common courtyards, terrace-level amenities, and private balconies. The parking has a total of five access points at different levels from the two driveways that you can see, one east-west driveway from Bristol Parkway to Uplander Way, and the other driveway opening onto Uplander Way on the south. There are also a total of four loading spaces, one commercial and three residential, that are also served by the proposed driveways. On this slide, I'll just highlight the open space breakdown, as I'd mentioned on the previous slide. The numbers are shown there for your benefit. And I'll also note that the project is consistent with the general plan, the MUHD zoning, and state density bonus law. I've also covered most of this content already on the site plan, but you can note the number of parking spaces, about 1,300, including both residential and commercial, that have been provided based on estimated parking demand as well as in response to community input. The project also meets the code requirements for EV parking and bicycle parking, as well as the requirements for CalGreen. I've covered most of these points as well, but I'll just note one additional point that the project is subject to conditions of approval that included provisions to ensure wider sidewalks consistent with the Safe of Fox Hills Plan. It includes a five-foot dedication along Bristol Parkway and a five-foot easement along Hanham Avenue. And it also includes proposing to move the curb six feet towards the street center line along Uplander Way, again, to enhance sidewalks. I'll also note that there's been facade articulation provided to reduce the visual impact of the seven-story building. And you can see that on all three of these images, where through a combination of materials, as well as some step backs at the top level, there's an attempt to reduce the visual impact. The image on the top left is from Hanham Avenue looking south, where you can see the access to the paseo at the second level with the stairs as well as the ADA accessible ramp. And on the right side of the paseo entrance, you can see the retail space. On the top right, you can see the other end of the paseo at Uplander Way. And at the bottom, you can see the view from Uplander Way on the east and also see the patio stoop entrances to ground-level residential. Three of the four parcels on the site were included in the housing element sites inventory. And the government code requires a no-net-loss finding regarding the project's impact on the sites inventory allocation. This finding can be made because although the project proposes 78 lower-income units compared to the 441 estimated for the site in the sites inventory, there is a sufficient buffer, about a 65% surplus, to meet the city's share of the regional housing need, after accounting for all the projects in the city's development pipeline, including this one. So the project is seeking site plan review. Note that it's consistent and it's compliant with all applicable objective standards in the MUHD zone, with the exception of the previously noted concession and waiver that's pursuant to state density bonus law. And also a brief reminder here that the city has limited discretion on the site plan review based on the State Housing Accountability Act. And the city cannot disapprove the project or impose conditions that would render the project unaffordable, unless based on a written finding of a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. The project is also seeking action on the proposed tentative parcel map. Four existing lots are proposed to be combined and subdivided into three lots for phased implementation. The parcel map is consistent with the subdivision regulations, and it's subject to conditions. The project's also seeking extended construction hours to start at 7:00 a.m. instead of 8:00 a.m. on weekdays, and at 8:00 a.m. instead of 9:00 a.m. on Saturdays. If approved, the applicant estimates a total of 27 to 36 weeks reduction in construction time. And the approval of this extended hours would be subject to conditions, including preparation of a final construction management plan, a copy of the draft of which is in your agenda materials. The applicant is also seeking flexibility on time limits for pulling permits and initiating construction for each phase. This has been addressed through a condition of approval, and staff supports this, just given the size and complexity of the project, which is more than three times the size of a typical large mixed-use project. The project completed a checklist pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15168, demonstrating that environmental impacts were within the scope of the general plan and zoning code update program, EIR, and that no further environmental impact analysis is required. The commission has received public comment regarding the SEQA process. The staff would like to clarify that although the project was initially proceeding along an EIR path, this was prior to the adoption of the general plan and zoning code update, PEIR. Thereafter, the approach was modified to a checklist pursuant to the SEQA guidelines. And the checklist approach included the same level of analysis as would have been required under an EIR, although the analysis was framed to demonstrate that the impacts were within the scope of the general plan and zoning update, PEIR. And this analysis determined that no further analysis of environmental impacts was required. If you have any questions about the SEQA analysis, a consultant from ESA is available. The project had three hybrid community meetings. It went above and beyond what our basic requirements are, and there were a total of 117 participants. There was also one additional in-person workshop held by the applicant to receive additional input on design. They were also mailed public notices to owners and occupants within 500 feet. And we received two comment letters before 3:00 p.m. today, one in support and one against. So you can see on this slide, the staff recommended motion for approval based on the attached resolution and subject to conditions of approval. I'd like to make a brief note of a minor correction to the resolution on Page 3, Section 1C, in the site plan review findings. There's an error in the statement of the number of very-low-income units. It should read as 78 instead of 36, and a strike to the reference to mixed units, to the mix of units in that finding. None of this actually changes the tone of the finding. That concludes the staff presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing? All right, may I take a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Carter. Please vote. Thank you, motion passes with five ayes.
All right, is the applicant prepared to proceed?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for bearing with us. I know it's been a long evening already, but my name is Spencer Callick. I'm with Allen Mackens. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and the property owner, B9 Sequoia Culver City. And I want to start by thanking planning staff, frankly, for their presentation and all their hard work that's gone on to this project. It's been a bit of a labor of love to get us to this evening, and I appreciate your help. I'm joined this evening by representatives from ownership and our design team. This includes our project architects, KFA Architecture, our local Culver City-based architecture firm with 50 years of expertise. We also have our civil engineer from Kimley Horn, our traffic engineer from Farr and Peers, and our community engagement team at KnowHow. Together, this team has put together a project that we are all very excited about. Pierre talked about this earlier, but let's talk a little bit about the project site. It's approximately 8.34 acres and takes up almost a full city block south of Hanham Avenue, west of Bristol Parkway, and east and north of Uplander Way. Currently developed with four office buildings that frankly have reached the end of their useful life, along with about four acres of surface parking. In its current state, the property is closed off from the surroundings, it has no community-serving amenities, and it's developed with a traffic-intensive use. The property is located in a great area in the heart of Fox Hills, near existing and planned multifamily, along with commercial uses on Hanham Avenue, the Fox Hills Park, the Culver City Transit Center, and the 405 are all within a half-mile. Given the state of its current improvements, it is a prime location, and the property is a great candidate for redevelopment. As Pierre mentioned in the general plan and zoning code, the property's land use designation and zoning is mixed-use high, which allows for mixed-use residential, office, and commercial uses. It permits a density of 100 dwelling units per acre as a base density. And the project is designed to comply with the mixed-use high development standards and state density bonus law, and is not seeking any variances. Pierre also talked a bit about community engagement. I want to double-click on it because it's important for this team. Over the last two years, the project has been under design. We have consistently engaged with the community. The project team went above and beyond city requirements, although three formal community meetings and an extra project design workshop. We also had countless one-on-one stakeholder meetings with neighbors and nearby businesses. We made a project website available where neighbors could learn more about the project and asking questions. And many of the project's features today are a direct result of that community feedback. And on that note, I want to turn things over to Jaime Olmos from KFA to provide information about the project design and features.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Last year in May, when we met with the community, we presented two design directions for the project in order to solicit feedback that we have since incorporated into the design that is that you see before you today. We heard, we heard a lot of interest in the townhome feel and stoops that create the edges of this development, specifically that it would provide a high degree of visibility and security for all of the pedestrians who will walk around this neighborhood. The paseo was very well-received, and there was interest in providing ample seating at the north and south ends, at the plazas, as well as throughout the paseo. The pitched roofs were very popular, as well as the brick cladding and large windows around the ground floor. So we added more pitched roofs and extended the brick base and added more balconies with larger windows. We also heard the community's concern about parking, and we took all of these comments into consideration as we developed the design. Our design process began by exploring the history and character of the local community. We discovered the previous use of the site as a golf course, which inspired the idea of the paseo, a landscape. of the paseo, a landscaped pathway that echoes the rolling terrain of the predeveloped site before the office buildings and the parking lots were built. The paseo also serves to break down the scale of the blocks for pedestrians and provide green, open space. Since there are no residential buildings on the site, we looked to the closest residential community along Buckingham Parkway for architectural cues so that this design feels like it belongs and extends the existing neighborhood while providing much-needed housing in the Fox Hills The project design accommodates, I think Peer did a great job going over all of these facts, but just to recap, over a thousand units, seventy-eight at the very low-income level. The mix of units is shown on the upper right here with an emphasis on one-bedroom units. The most notable feature of this project is the paseo, which is a publicly accessible pathway nearly an acre in size that crosses all the way across the north to the south end, and together with the open space provided and the courtyards, balconies, there is nearly three acres of total open space, which is sixty percent over the required minimum open space, and that includes a small, secured dog park for residents. The commercial space on Hanham will be five thousand seven hundred and seventy-two square feet, which can accommodate a café, a small restaurant, or some other community-serving retail. It will have dedicated parking within the building, along with all of the residential parking. The amount of parking was determined through a traffic demand study and informed by community feedback to provide enough parking, but also not provide any more than is necessary. Fifty percent of the parking, as Peer covered, will be EV stalls with receptacles or chargers, and the three hundred and five bike parking spaces will include protected long-term stalls as well as publicly accessible short-term stalls. In terms of the landscape and ecology, the site is very rich. The landscape team identified the potential for this site to act as a critical pollinator landing pad between Kennethon State Recreational Area, Holy Cross Cemetery on the north, and the Fox Hills Park and Hillside Memorial Park on the south. The paseo will be landscaped with native plants like toyon sages and milkweeds that support pollinator habitats. In terms of other creatures, the paseo will also be dog-friendly with strategically-placed dog relief areas. And on rainy days like we expect this weekend, this paseo, which figuratively resembles a canyon, will also include a meandering dry creek, which will capture rainwater and carry it to dry wells, which will recharge the natural aquifers. It will include three public art stations, which are yet to be designed, but we envisioned will act as a magnet drawing people through. The residential courtyards, which line the paseo, will also be generously amenitized with pools, barbecue areas, and a range of passive and active programming. On-site, there will be a total of a hundred and sixty-eight trees, including those mature existing trees which will be preserved. On-screen, you see a rendering of the paseo with built-in seating around what we call an oasis, where public art could be located. The dry creek is visible on the, on the left bottom in a shaded area. We see this as an inviting and safe space to meet your friends, walk the dog, and maybe bump into your neighbors. Surrounding the site, the sidewalks will be widened as shown there on the right, and include landscaped parkways with forty-five new street trees, where there are none now, providing shade and mitigating the urban heat island effect. Intersection ramps will be updated and bike lanes will be restriped, and we went through great lengths to locate multiple rideshare locations, as well as off-street service areas for trash deliveries and loading, so that trucks will not be blocking the surrounding streets. So with that, I'll hand it back to Spencer Callick to share with you some community benefits.
So I want to talk briefly about community benefits. There are numerous as part of this project. As we've mentioned, the public paseo and two plazas will be significant benefits to community, have a huge improvement from that current site that is closed off to the public, and the paseo will also include public art. We will also make several street and connectivity improvements, as previously mentioned, which will enhance the pedestrian experience all around the project. In addition, the project will be contributing millions of in-lu parkland and mobility improvement fees to better enhance the Fox Hills neighborhood. And finally, we are also providing seventy-eight units of affordable housing out of very low-income, for very low-income households. So again, we are requesting three approvals this evening, site plan review to approve the project at large, testing tentative track parcel map to change the current four parcels into three parcels, each for, or one for each building, and finally, requesting an extended hours of construction permit to allow an early start to frankly get that housing built faster. Note that we also requested a density bonus, which staff has already administratively approved. I did want to briefly touch, as Peer did, about the two, what I would call, SEQA letters you received from labor unions about the document, the SEQA document that's been prepared for this project. That SEQA document shows that the project's environmental impacts are within the scope of the programmatic EIR the city certified last year as part of its general plan and zoning update. We prepared the same technical analysis that would have been required for an EIR, including a traffic study, noise study, air quality analysis, water supply assessment, and other technical studies to fully vet this specific project before you this evening. Interesting that the letters that you all received claim to have provided project-specific analysis, but actually provided project-specific analysis for a whole other project that they just slapped on the back of the letter they sent you. And the results showed, for, for the analysis that ESA did, that the results showed the project did not create any new impacts that were significant and unavoidable with mitigation measures already in place. So with that, want to appreciate all of your time. I know that we're a bit late here in the evening. Happy to take any questions. We are very, very, very excited to bring this project before you and get your comments and feedback this evening, and hopeful approval. Thanks.
All right, do we have any members of the public?
Yes, we have. We have five speakers registered.
All right, let's do three minutes each, please.
All right. Our first speaker is Edward Wolkowitz.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Edward Wolkowitz, and I'm here on behalf of the Culver City Chamber of Commerce. And although I must say that personally I have long lamented the loss of the golf course, the chamber had occasion, Chamber Board had occasion to consider this project and wholeheartedly approved of it. We believe that it will go a long way towards satisfying the, the city's obligation under its housing element, and we ask that the commission approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I will read off the four registered speakers so they know that they are coming up. Sharon Levine, Gloria Smith, Eric Shapsis, and Ken Mand. So our next speaker is Sharon Levine.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah. It's been a long evening. I'd like to encourage you to have public hearings at a more reasonable hour, but I do want to say that although the project looks lovely and they seem to have carried through on the promises that they made at previous meetings, the, the issue is the cumulative impacts of what is proposed. For the neighborhood, there are currently about twenty-six hundred units existing in Fox Hills, and you have now at least three thousand units proposed, and the problem is that even though this complex itself seems to be lovely and satisfy a lot of needs, you're not taking into account the cumulative impacts of what is happening. The infrastructure in the community does not support what is going to be happening and all of the impacts that are going to occur from the three thousand new units that are soon to be constructed in that area. And I, I just can't understand, like, that what you're going to do about the parking impacts, the traffic. There's no new infrastructure approved for the Fox Hills community, and yet each project itself is taken individually without considering what is going to happen with all the other neighborhood projects are impacting as a group. So I don't know what to say. They, they, they promised that they would save the big significant trees along Windsor Way, I believe it is. I'm hoping they're going to do that. He said something about large, significant, exceptional trees, and hopefully they'll retain those. The parking is going to be an issue. The traffic is an issue. I don't see any plan that is going to address the impacts of that in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gloria Smith. Gloria, you are unmuted. You may speak. I can skip over to the next speaker, which is Eric Shapsis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Shapsis with the project team. I am a consultant with KnowHow Public Affairs. I just wanted to bring your attention to a few letters of support that the project did receive after the three o'clock deadline, which I will pass to the city clerk. I believe one of them may be on Ken Mand, as well as Ross Piro from the Lindbrook Park Neighborhood, and then call your attention as well to the wholehearted letter of support from Abundant Housing and its CEO in support of this project. Thank you very much for your attention and for your vote this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Mand.
Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. This project before us that the project team is presenting to you really checks all boxes for the city. Almost eighty very-low-income units, three-point-five million to a mobility fund, widened sidewalks, neighborhood-serving retail, not to mention it's spot-on consistent with the general plan update. One small item that I think this project could benefit from is extending the three hundred and five bike parking spots. I feel like a project of this scale with this many people living there, that the more bike parking that is made available, maybe in a flexible conditional-type condition to the, what's before you, could be beneficial. It could, even throughout the paseo, they could be used as architectural elements, but I feel like the project could benefit very much by some more bike parking. And lastly, a project of this scale in its specific location should most definitely get the requested seven AM construction start. It will really help to deliver this project to the public as soon as possible. So that, that said, it's a great project, and thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Gloria Smith.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. I apologize for whatever happened earlier. My name is Gloria Smith. I'm speaking on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, SAFER. We did submit comments earlier today. SAFER is requesting that the commission not approve staff's SEQA checklist for two separate reasons. First, the programmatic EIR was never intended for specific development projects like fifty-seven fifty-seven Uplander. And second, staff's own 2024 SEQA initial study found that the project would have numerous significant impacts requiring an EIR. Turning to the first issue, the massive Uplander project is not within the scope of the city's programmatic EIR. The city prepared that document to analyze the 2024 general plan's various elements for legal compliance and zoning code consistency. The programmatic EIR was never intended to serve as a SEQA compliance for specific projects, and the EIR makes that clear. In numerous instances, the P E I R says things like, "There is no information regarding specific development projects," and "The exact nature of future projects is unknown. Analysis would be speculative at best." For GHG emissions, it says, "Applicable SEQA analysis as required would determine significance based on the individual project specifics." The P E I R repeatedly contains this disclaimer for many of the SEQA issues. That makes sense, right? Because programmatic EIRs are guidance documents to help, help inform later SEQA review for specific projects like Uplander. Staff's SEQA clearance document, they're calling a checklist, no matter how voluminous, cannot retroactively infuse the programmatic EIR with specificity it does not have and was never intended to have. Second, less than one year ago, staff prepared, and prepared an initial SEQA study for Uplander and found that an EIR was required to investigate significant impacts for fifteen SEQA topics such as transportation, air quality, hazardous materials, and more. What changed in the last year? The programmatic EIR did not propose project-specific measures to mitigate those, those impacts identified in that initial study. As it stands, that initial study is the only SEQA analysis we have for Uplander, one on which the public was allowed to comment. Staff has already said an EIR is required for this project, and the P E I R does not contain the necessary specificity you need to move this project to the city council. The commission should reject. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That is the end of our speakers.
All right, now with the applicant, I'd like to present her a vote.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Want to address a couple of concerns that were raised. I'll start with the last one we heard first. I think giving you all some, some context is probably helpful. I know that you don't often hear from folks like SAFER and Mitchell Si. Unfortunately, I do all the time in my business, and to be blunt, these are labor unions who are looking for us to use union labor and trying to use the SEQA process to try to get us to use union labor as part of our project, and are frankly throwing out arguments that are not accurate. So let's address some of them head-on. This project was, it is correct that there was initially done an initial study and that an EIR was recommended. That was at the time that this project included a comprehensive plan to amend the zoning code and to have project-specific zoning regulations. That is not the project before you this evening because, as you all know, you all adopted the zoning code update, the housing element update, that changed the zoning regulations for this property and all properties throughout the city, and as a result, in connection with that, the city prepared this programmatic EIR that looked at all potential development that could occur on, across the city as part of its zoning code update. And so when that occurred, this project that's before you pivoted, and it was now zoning code compliant. It was compliant also with the programmatic EIR that was prepared, and as a result, we utilized the existing programmatic EIR and did a project-specific analysis. So there is a traffic study that is specific to this project, that by the way, looks at not just this study, project, but all cumulative projects that are known or contemplated or already approved in the area. Same with air quality, noise, GHG. All the technical studies looked at not just this project, but also the cumulative projects in the area as well. So there was a very, very robust SEQA analysis done for this project. So there was a very, very robust SEQA analysis done for this project. And as a result, there is no reason that an EIR is needed. We have fully complied with state law, and SEQA has found that there are no additional impacts that need to be studied. The other thing I want to chat about was, there's a comment about infrastructure. We're very aware, as I know you all are, that there are a number of plans that have been prepared for Fox Hills, SAFER Fox Hills amongst others, the new circulation element that contemplates additional upgrades to the infrastructure across Fox Hills. You know, as part of this project, we're going to be paying about $3 million in mobility fees. We don't control where those mobility fees go. However, we have absolutely been speaking with C-staff and urged council members that we think it makes sense for those mobility fees to be directed to Fox Hills to help pay for many of these infrastructure projects that are planned. And we hope that you will add your voice of support to that as well. Bike parking, we are providing code-required bike parking. And parking, you know, I've had the pleasure of being before you all many times and talking about lots of projects and lots of parking is always a comment that we get. What I can tell you is, first of all, that we have done a robust traffic, parking analysis rather, looking at the existing parking demand for existing projects in Fox Hills. And as a result, we have then utilized the same parking demand for our project. And practically speaking, parking is oftentimes the most expensive part of building a project. And no developer wants to build a project that's going to have a ton of extra parking, nor does our city council and state legislators want a ton of extra parking. We want the exact right amount of parking plus one space. And so our team are experienced developers who have studied this closely and believe that we have more than adequate parking to park everyone on site. Because we have certainly heard through this process that people do not want our residents or our guests parking on the already busy streets. And so we have made sure that this project can be fully parked, both the commercial space, residential space, guest space, all within our parking garage. And with that, happy to take any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
So before we do that, let's all go through it and indicate whether we have met with the applicant, Commissioner Black.
I did not.
I did?
I did.
I did not.
So comments, questions, Commissioner Black.
Can I ask one clarifying real quick? It's real quick. Are you requesting a discount on parkland? Because it says in the staff report you are, but I got an email that said you didn't. And I'm trying to clarify that.
Yeah, so we did not make a formal request to reduce our parkland fees. It was something that was in the staff report and the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have sort of a hypothetical question. I see, first of all, this is a really, really attractive project. And a huge one. So I see that there are three sites. Four turned into three, and there will be three phases. So let's take a worst-case scenario. And you build phase one, and then, you know, some externality occurs. What will we then be seeing if phase one gets built and there is some delay in moving forward with the rest of the project? What would the site look like? And is parcel one also phase one?
Yes. Thanks for the question, Commissioner. That is correct. The idea is that there will be three new parcels from four today. Each parcel will be its own phase. You know, candidly, with 1,077 units, very few people will take on that many units all at once. And so this is envisioned as three different phases. And so we are already in the process of, frankly, at our own risk of putting together construction drawings for phase one. And the idea would be that once phase one is built and completed, that will be a standalone project, if you will, or phase that will have its own parking garage, its own amenities, all within that space. And then, you know, the following phases would occur after that.
But the demolition of the whole site would have taken place?
No, we would not be demolishing. We would just be demolishing one phase at a time.
And so in terms of, these are each then self-sufficient in terms of the amenities and the community-facing services?
That's correct. I will note that the phase one is the phase that has the 5,777 square feet of retail space at the ground floor. So that will be the first phase.
Thanks. That's my only question.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Gallan.
I think the project is great. I live in the neighborhood. I can't wait till it's there. My only concern is the Paseo and its survival. I worry that there is a future where gates come up and it's no longer publicly accessible. It would be to the occupants, but not the public. Is there any assurances that we have that this will remain in place?
That's a great question. And I'm looking at our friend Troy Evangelou because he and I have had many, many, many conversations about this exact topic. So thanks for raising it. So the Paseo is private property. And I think that's actually a benefit because we, as opposed to the city or taxpayers, are responsible for maintaining it and keeping it being a vibrant space. To be clear, and I could kind of delineate for you on the plans, there are spaces within that are kind of adjacent to it, like the resident-only dock perforances that are just for residents, not open to the public, and there will be gates for security reasons there. We do plan to maintain that public Paseo has indeed a public Paseo and open space, really because it is a community amenity. And we feel really excited about having that. Like, I guess what I would say is, it's very rare that developers say, "Hey, I want to give up an acre of land just to make it open to the public." We've gone above and beyond what's required, frankly, because we think it makes it a better project. We think it makes it a better amenity. And we're excited about providing that for the community.
So, but is there any assurance that it will remain open? There's nothing to compel you in the future to keep it open if you decide to put gates up?
So there are conditions of approval that requires to build to what our site plan is. You know, I do think that there will be, you know, as it's a phased project, the Paseo is not going to go all the way from the top of the site all the way down to the bottom of the site until all three phases are completed. So there probably will be some division until that, the project is fully realized.
Okay. I'm not hearing any assurances specifically. But maybe I'll ask a different question. Are there any public-facing spaces, any retail, that are only accessible from the Paseo? Or will they all be street-only access or parking and garage access?
The retail space that's part of phase one will be accessible from the street and open to the public.
Right, but is anything only accessible from the Paseo?
No.
All right. I remain concerned that this Paseo may not come to, may not last. But I still think the project is good for the neighborhood. Thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Jennings.
I don't really have any questions. I was going to joke that, let's do one less parking space. But you be careful what you say.
I said plus one.
Yeah. But no, I like the project. I'm excited about the 78 very low-income units. I want to thank staff for the analysis under the sites inventory that know that loss and telling us because the fact that you're not only doing it, but communicating it to us is super important. I want to note that, like, it should give us pause about how we prepare that sites inventory. Not because we, you know, should have known that this would happen, but there was talk of looking at the likelihood of development and then discounting what we expect to come from those sites. And we didn't end up doing that. I strongly think we should, you know, consider doing that so we don't face this issue. Because if this one was projected for 441, it's only doing 78. And our known that loss analysis requires us to rely on the other low-income units that might be much less. Then we don't have a legal problem, but we have, you know, we might not meet our arena numbers on the low-income side. So that's for, you know, I guess probably sooner than we would like because we have to get started on the next one. Anyway, okay, that aside, yeah, I'm excited about this project. I think that we, I mean, the number of units is huge and the number of parking spaces is huge. But those were questions for the rezoning, which is done and it's in place. And 78 very low-income units, I think that's a huge deal. And so, and on the, I'm more generally, I think, I think that if it's an incentive to build more publicly accessible parkland, then a discount maybe is something we should talk about. But if they did it and they weren't asking for a discount, there shouldn't be a discount. That's my view on that. Thank you.
Vice Chair Carter.
So thanks for taking the palm trees out of the picture. I love seeing the shade trees. It's huge. And thank you for saying pollinator habitat resting place because it is right between Kineton and Biona Wetlands. But also, the new Culver City Park proposal has a lot of native plants, and that consistency is really going to bring a lot to the community. You know, native plants are like the opposite of office parks. So it really is going to be a whole new thing. I also caught the bike spaces. I didn't think that was a, I think you might need more bike spaces. And I, Bike Culver City did a biking tour, an infrastructure biking tour. And we started at Sid K. Park, and we biked to the mall. And it was so interesting because so, it's bikeable right until you, you're like, just, it's a couple blocks on Overland where I would not have done it if I was not in a group. Where, you know, and it's so close. And then I was thinking about, it's so close to being able, the kids could bike to school. I mean, it's only two and a half miles. But I guess my question for staff is, is there anything? There are things in the works, right? Transportation changes in the works to, that might facilitate that? Yeah, Better Overland.
Yes. We also have Thomas Chek, a senior transportation, traffic transportation engineer from Mobility, if you would like to hear from him.
Yeah. Please.
Hi. Good evening, Planning Commission. Yes, we do have the Better Overland project, which does seek to connect the northernmost part of the city, starting at Venice and Overland, to the Fox Hills neighborhood and the Culver City Transit Center. We recently were awarded a $5.4 million grant from Los Angeles Metro to build out a portion of this project on Overland. And we also will be delivering the first phase of the SAFER Fox Hills project next year, which will introduce protected bike lanes on Green Valley Circle, Bristol Parkway, and Buckingham Parkway. So we are actively seeking to connect the Fox Hills neighborhood, the rest of the city, and the larger region to enhance connectivity for pedestrian and cyclist modes of transit.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, thank you. And I would also say if they're not asking for the fee, like, we could, you know, I know parks can use that money, so. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So my first question is for staff. I really, I've looked at the resolution. Does the resolution contain a reduction of the parkland fees? I didn't see it.
It does not.
Okay. So the resolution we're approving or would be approving does not contain that?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just haven't heard this discussion, I just wanted to, I've looked through it, but I never quite do. All right, there's that. You know, for what it is, this is going to be, it's a massive project. It is going to be a game changer for what Fox Hills is like. I think as a city, we ought to start talking about incentivizing three-bedroom units, family units, because we cannot continue to build units for single people and couples without families because that, the single-family neighborhoods are simply not going to, don't have the housing to humanize. So I hope that at some point we do that. I understand why this was done this way. I approve the, in particular, the stoop units. I always say how much I like those. I'm glad to see those here. Also glad we're getting 78 very low-income units without spending $20 million from the city treasury. Always lovely to see that. This is the way to build affordable housing. So thank you for bringing this forward. All right, let's see. I think it's time for a motion. Everyone seems to be ready to do that. So looking for a motion that will do the following. That the Planning Commission adopt resolution. Sorry?
We didn't close the public.
Oh, well, let's close the public before I make the motion. Just see that. Someone move that, please. Thank you very much.
Can I have a second, please? I have moved by Commissioner Black, second by Commissioner Van Gallen. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes.
All right. So we're looking for a motion that will do the following. Motion that the Planning Commission adopt resolution number 2025-P013, approving a California Environmental Quality Act SEQA checklist pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15168, determining that the environmental effects of the operation are within the scope of the Culver City General Plan 2045 and zoning code update certified programmatic environmental impact report, and approving site plan review, tentative parcel map, and extended construction hours for project P2024-0190-SPR/TPM, subject to conditions of approval as stated in the resolution. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Black. Please vote. Motion passes with five ayes.
Just real quick on that, I'm, maybe I made a mistake, but in the project summary, it says applicant is seeking 50% credit for onsite open space. Was that an error?
That was an error.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, no problem.
All right. So we're going to move on to the action item. I need to accuse myself of the action item because I live too close to it. I believe our city treaty does as well. So you give us a couple of minutes to clear out. You'll be running the meeting then.
All right.
Vice Chair.
And Darrell, for the record, we do have a local incentive for three-bedroom units or more in our new density bonus ordinance.
And Vice Chair Carter, Deputy City Attorney Michael Cobden is online and available.
So do I need to? Oh. Uh huh. Huh? Yeah, no rush. All right. Okay, so we'll hear from staff now? Wonderful.
here. This specific plan will have the same organization and layout as the Fox Hills Plan, including the user guide, the vision chapter that will provide graphics, maps, and other depictions of the desired neighborhood, and the implementation chapter, which will include the land use and development standards, which is essentially the zoning, public right-of-way requirements that will dictate street, sidewalk, and passo improvements, and lastly, future city actions, where we'll outline next steps for city-initiated projects, such as a potential passo along the top of the creek bank, improved neighborhood connections, and undergrounding utilities, things such as that. And with that, I would like to hand it off to Ashley.
Thank you, Troy. So we just wanted to step back a few months and remind you what we heard at the Planning Commission at our last session with you, and then also what we heard from council in the first round. So we heard a desire, right, to tie height increases to affordable housing requirements, to explore inclusionary options, support safer and more comfortable ways to move around, especially for cyclists and pedestrians, connect more to the creek and to Baldwin Hills, and to integrate sidewalk buffers, enhance transit, and we've also been exploring a shared street option. And then when we talked to city council, we heard some similar inputs. First is that staff, council directed staff to explore increased height and density options beyond the alternatives that we had presented. We also heard a desire to integrate usable open spaces, especially on properties facing the creek. And like the commission, we heard from council that mobility safety, of course, is an emphasis, as was parking management. Equitable and transparent outreach was brought up as a priority, and then also to balance business and residential development. So these are the two height alternatives. You have already seen alternative A, which is an alternative that retains the existing 56-foot height limit along the western edge of the specific plan boundary. It increases to 75 feet in the core area, which is that slightly darker blue color, and then 85 feet along the creek, which is the darkest blue color. And then in response to council's feedback, we created alternative B, which is an option that also keeps the 56-foot height limit along the western edge, but raises the height in the core to 85 feet, and then 110 feet along the creek. So these changes aim to allow taller buildings away from the lower-density residential to the west, and enhance the framing of the creek, and then also get some more public amenities along the creek to activate it. Another thing that we're exploring is proposed land use standards. So that includes density and how many dwelling units per acre, and then the floor area ratio as well. So as you probably know, the current zoning for the area is the 56-foot height limit with the 65 dwelling units an acre and a floor area ratio of 3.0. The second height limit that we're looking at, the 85-foot, we're looking at tying that to the 100 dwelling units an acre in a 4.0 floor area ratio, which is essentially the existing mixed-use high zone, which currently can be found in places like Ivy Station, the Culver Center, and Studio Village Shopping Centers, and then several blocks in Fox Hills. And then finally, for the 110-foot, we're considering 120 dwelling units an acre and then a 6.0 floor area ratio. And then over to Troy.
Thank you, Ashley. Tag team in this one. So I wanted to take a moment and briefly discuss the impacts for SB 79, and with a couple of caveats here. First caveat is that this is a preliminary analysis, and so this is not an official map. SCAG will be producing the official map in July. So, second caveat, the first bullet point there, this is not intended to be an SB 79 study session. This is meant to kind of inform the relevant policies from SB 79 and how we're going to be integrating them into the plan. So as you can see in the second bullet point, as Ashley was discussing, there's a current height limit that we have of 56 feet. So through SB 79, anything that falls within this half-mile radius, as, as shown in the map here, indicated with the, the blue circles, there would be a 55-foot height limit required for residential. So we're already past that, and we're looking to exceed that potentially, again, as you step away from the Rancho High Gera neighborhood. The one difference is, there is a higher density proposed. So SB 79 proposes a 80-unit-per-acre density. Now, we're not planning on changing the proposal that we have with our base 65 units. This would basically supersede that. We're moving ahead with the proposal as we've developed it before SB 79 came on the scene. So, again, a lot of the densities and a lot of the heights we're proposing are going to exceed this 80 dwelling units per acre, and the ones that wouldn't, the ones that are closest to the Rancho High Gera neighborhood, would be superseded by any development coming in. So it essentially upzones it to 80 units per acre. Also, wanted to point out, bullet point three, these are the base densities that we're talking about. So as we showed on the previous slide, 100 units per acre, 120 units per acre, and again, what's being established through SB 79, that would be the base density, which, again, a developer could come forward with a density bonus project and further increase those densities. Bullet point number four, another caveat of SB 79 is it does provide the option for what's called a transit-oriented development alternative plan. And what that is, is it allows you to sort of shift the densities around within those half-mile radiuses around the transit stations. So, you know, potentially it would allow for, let's just say, grabbing some of the density that would have been in that Rancho High Gera neighborhood and pulling it into the Hayden Tract plan. This is not something that we're pursuing. This is not something we've been directed to do. Again, we're moving forward with the plan as originally presented to you in the last study session. So trying to shift densities between the plan area and outside areas is not something that we're contemplating at this time. One other caveat I'd like to point out, and it's not on a bullet point here, but SB 79 does have an inclusionary requirement, meaning that if you're going to build more than 10 units, you have to include affordable housing. And they have it broken down by different categories, either 7% for extremely low, 10% for very low, 13% for low. So they already have sort of a built-in inclusionary requirement. And again, based off our preliminary analysis, it covers most of the Hayden Tract area. So last time we checked in with the Planning Commission, I know there was an interest to look into ways to incentivize affordable housing, especially with densities increasing. And so one of the things we're considering, and we're here for your feedback on, is whether or not we should just apply this inclusionary requirement across the entirety of the plan area, just to, to kind of capture that little piece on the bottom that wouldn't otherwise be included as part of the inclusionary requirement. And so, again, a lot of information there, but the takeaway is, we have studied SB 79, we're sort of ahead of the game with the plan that we're doing with higher densities already, but we're making sure that whatever we propose is going to be consistent and that we're including every relevant policy. And on that same note, another item that, again, we touched on today, as you heard in the previous item, Housing Element Law requires that low-income mixed-use projects that are on our inventory are built with a minimum of 50% residential. So again, I just wanted to highlight on this map here, there are a few locations within the plan area where this would apply. Again, these are located on the areas that we're proposing the highest density, and also potential incentive for hotel. We'll get into that in a little bit. But again, wanted to point out, we're, we're making sure that we're paying attention in integrating all of the housing element requirements, state law requirements, SB 79, all of the sort of moving pieces outside of the plan and incorporating them into the plan. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it back to Ashley.
Great, thanks, Troy. So the next piece is looking at mobility in open space. So this is the mobility in open space concept that we presented at the last open house. And safety and traffic and flow and all of that is really the core of the vision. So the overarching components are complete streets, increased connections, and public spaces. Looking at complete streets. So we have a couple of slides showing potential updates that we're considering. The first is to the streets in the zone, which are 60-foot right-of-ways, so that includes Hayden Avenue, Eastum, Stellar Drive, and Warner Drive. And the purpose is really to create, like I said, more spaces for pedestrians and bicyclists, increase canopy coverage, have clear signage, wider pedestrian through zones, making it a lot easier and more comfortable for people to walk between different spaces, like outdoor dining and amenities, and then also integrating things like small parklets and open spaces where it makes sense. So the vision for the majority of these 60-foot right-of-ways is really focused on creating more amenities and more comfortable amenities for pedestrians. So just of note, these changes would require parallel parking on both sides of the streets, where currently some of the streets have angled parking. And then it would also require a three-foot dedication tied to development on both sides of the street. And then another example is National. So the idea here is, as well is to create a wider sidewalk for pedestrians that's also safer and more comfortable. And so that would require removing the current parallel parking that's on the south side of the street, reducing an eastbound lane, and then a five-and-a-half-foot dedication tied to development on the south side of, of the street. And then just quickly to summarize our community engagement activities, we've held tables along with the Fox Hills specific plan team at several community events throughout the last several months. Like I mentioned, we held an open house at Sid Cornetall Park, and that was in the end of September. Along with that, we launched an updated version of the virtual open house that you see here, so that allows people to just go on whenever they have the time, scan through all of the materials, leave comments, and then also staff and the team talk to property owners and stakeholders throughout the process. So during the open house, we presented all of these new materials, as well as a draft vision and guiding principles for the plan. And we received a variety of reactions. The height alternatives, there were some concerns about alternative B and the height, but also some support for it. We also heard support for open space amenities, and, again, concerns about traffic and traffic safety, and mention of the cul-de-sac and bollards at Hayden Avenue. And so for timeline and next steps, on engagement, the next time that we'll be seeing folks is at a council meeting, to be determined sometime likely in January. And then on the technical side, in the background, we'll be working on standards throughout the rest of the year, and then also starting on SEQA technical studies. And then we'll look to have an open house in March, April, to go over draft standards, and then looking to spring for reviewing a draft plan, and then spring or summer for So what we want to leave you with to consider are a few questions focused on the factors that we're really interested in getting your, getting your input on tonight. The first of which is the height alternatives, and if there is a preference for the 85 or 110-foot maximum alternative. Should we include any inclusionary requirements that Troy talked to, you know, potentially aligned with SB 79? Should we include incentives for onsite open space in hotels? Maybe that could look like waiving park fees, or adding density for public open spaces, or even additional height increases for hotels as an incentive. So we'll leave you with that, and of course, happy to answer any questions and help as your discussion unfolds.
Thank you. All right. Can we open it up? Oh, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have two speakers registered.
Okay. Okay.
Three, three minutes?
Three minutes, yes.
All right. Our first speaker is Joseph Cohen May.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm Joseph Cohen May from the Los Angeles Housing Production Institute. This is an area of the region where we're seeing, on the city of L.A. side of the creek, there's really becoming a new skyline that's anchoring the west side, and I'm really excited for this planning effort to be moving forwards. We strongly support alternative B, and we actually would encourage considering even more height and density in select areas than what is currently there. And perhaps having the 110-foot height limit extending along National, where there's easy bicycle access to the E-line station, would also suggest the base density for the tallest section to be slightly higher than 120 dwelling units per acre. And the note about the inclusionary is SB 79 inclusion requirements, as they currently stand, would only apply to projects that are using SB 79. So a project that would be using this specific plan wouldn't have those inclusionary requirements if they're not part of the specific plan, even in the SB 79 area. And I would support having the same inclusionary requirements as SB 79. Finally, in terms of, like, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, I would highly encourage considering doing a bridge over the Bologna Creek halfway between Obama and National, and then tie into some future improvements the city of L.A. will hopefully do on Jefferson, on the L.A. side. That will have much better, that will be really great for connecting the neighborhood and making it one continuous neighborhood between the L.A. and Culver City side in the future, rather than right now, they are very, very separate. And also, consider maybe a pedestrian bike passo in the, like, parking alley between Stillah and Warner, where the old rail line is, that would maybe connect to that potential pedestrian. And so that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle Allen Neeson.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Kyle Allen Neeson, and I'm a McManus-owned homeowner who has lived in the neighborhood just north of Hayden Tract since 2019. I wanted to advocate for alternative B, and maybe like the last speaker, go even higher. Pushing for maximum allowed height first, because it would be great to welcome new neighbors and add vitality to the area. And second, as I think was mentioned earlier in the report, zoning for additional housing here can open up flexibility for how the city approaches SB 79 implementation, including a potential alternative plan that modifies the maximum height and impacts the areas to more closely match the city's 2045 general plan. I don't think that SB 79's potential impact is widely understood in the affected areas of Culver City, maybe as shown by the fact that there's only two speakers on this item. And I think it's going to become highly politically salient when it does. The Planning Commission should consider giving the city as many options as possible to balance our need for new housing and state legal compliance with the existing communities and the zoning guidelines that we just laid out in the adopted general. just north of Hayden Tract since 2019. I wanted to advocate for Alternative B, and maybe like the last speaker, go even higher. Pushing for maximum allowed height first, because it would be great to welcome new neighbors and add vitality to the area. And second, as I think was mentioned earlier in the report, zoning for additional housing here can open up flexibility for how the city approaches SB 79 implementation, including a potential alternative plan that modifies the maximum height and impacts the areas to more closely match the city's 2045 general plan. I don't think that SB 79's potential impact is widely understood in the affected areas of Culver City, maybe as shown by the fact that there's only two speakers on this item. And I think it's going to become highly politically salient when it does. The Planning Commission should consider giving the city as many options as possible to balance our need for new housing and state legal compliance with the existing communities and the zoning guidelines that we just laid out in the adopted general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers.
Okay. Should we start with a, just open it up to a discussion? Commissioner Black.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the department staff on all the different options that you provided for people to give input. Before I try to understand SB 79, as you know, I was not on the Planning Commission during the first study session, so I may not have a complete picture of the process here. But, one thing that I noticed as I was reviewing the materials is there wasn't any mention of the Eric Owen Moss buildings in the Hayden Tract. And whether you love them or you hate them, there's no denying that his body of work is what put Culver City on the map with respect to design. This experimental adaptive reuse, which began more than 25 years ago, has given us an international reputation in the design world, and it's what makes the Hayden Tract such a cool place. So, it seems important that our principles protect and enhance this collection of buildings as an architectural and cultural landscape. I noticed that four of his structures have actually been designated as architecture-as-art by the Culver City Cultural Affairs Commission. And I'm not suggesting that we freeze them in time, but it might be a good idea to think about something like, and I know this implies bad things, but a conservation district overlay. I'd like to see us consider something like a Hayden Tract Design Advisory Panel, maybe convened by the Cultural Affairs Commission. I know there's no shortage of architects and architectural heritage experts in Culver City and our surrounding area. I'm definitely not advancing a NIMBY, you know, neighborhood character argument. I strongly support adding housing. I know we need affordable housing. I realize the market demands a certain density to make that feasible, but I don't want to see us unthinkingly add so much generic housing over retail that it overwhelms the architectural resources that made the Hayden Tract so distinctive in the first place. I hope we have the opportunity to do both, to plan for significant mixed-use development with housing, and also preserve the design innovation and the creative industrial DNA that exists in the Hayden Tract. I don't know how to go about doing this, doing this sort of thing as a new commissioner, but I look forward to your guidance, and I just wanted to point that out as part of this process. Regarding SB 79, is the inclusionary requirement then also part of a density bonus?
So, my understanding, and again, this is still unfolding in real time for us, is that it would apply to projects of 10 or more units, which would essentially be any type of residential we would potentially see coming through in this area.
But, by being required to include them, do you also get a bonus for including them?
Typically, yes. So, by an inclusionary requirement, you would also get to count those inclusionary units towards a density bonus, yes.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of the higher density by the creek. I think if people are going to be going for a density bonus on top of the suggested minimums, you know, personally, I think we also want it to be a livable area. If we can incentivize more open space with these greater heights, I guess I would be in favor of that. I have to say that I'm not a fan of the parallel parking. I really hope that some part of this area could be car-free, and we can figure out some way to get people from where they leave their cars to where they need to go, and just have it be more of a pedestrian environment. So, I guess those are my preliminary thoughts.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. I think this is going in a great direction. I'm very happy with it. I prefer option B, and if you want to go even higher, great. Regarding the point on SB 79 to be expanded to the whole Hayden Tract, or at least the minimum requirements, I would endorse that as well. Perhaps it can be written in such a way that any transportation-related requirements be implemented uniformly in the Hayden Tract, not just now, but going forward. I'm not sure if that's feasible, but I think that's a good way to go. I did have a question regarding required dedications. I understood some of them, but not all of them. Could I ask you to bring up the slides again? I think, I forget the number, you'll have to forgive me. It was in the, yeah, go backwards, please. One more? That's it, yeah, sorry. Yep. What do you get with 66 feet that you don't get with 60?
So, I will say, Thomas Chek, who joined us in the last item, our traffic engineer who's worked on the safer Fox Hills, the Complete Streets Design Guidelines, he's been integral throughout this entire process. And so, he's met with the consultant team and myself numerous times. And, again, using those Complete Streets Design Standards, they have very specific, you know, the parkways are a certain width, the throughway on the sidewalk is a certain width, the shyway zone next to the building is a certain width. And so, this is the end result of that, applied specifically to these streets. So, we went through several iterations. And, again, so, it's not reflected necessarily in the graphic, but, you know, where the trees are, that could be the buffer area, the planter area. And then, again, you have the throughway. And so, this is the practical implementation of that Complete Streets Design Standards for this particular neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Now that this is up, I don't see any bike lanes here. I'm sure that'd be considered as well. I wouldn't mind seeing biking instead of parking, and I think that, what do you call those little parking space eating, sitting areas, parklets? That's a solution for an existing situation. Since we're remaking the roads, I take it we could do this properly and have that integrated as part of the walkable space of the street. I may be wrong, but that, I hope that would be the intention here. Was there, I think I addressed all the questions you guys had for us. Is there, am I missing one?
There's also a question of whether to consider incentives for trying to get onsite open space open to the public. Again, it's kind of an urban area built out, not a lot of access to open space, so whether either through potentially waiving park fees for projects that would provide public-accessible open space, or
Density-related, right?
Or density increases for the public open space, and then also incentives for hotels, whether or not they could have an additional height incentive, things like that.
My opinion on those are as follows. Regarding the parks fees, I don't know. I don't know how much they cost, and I don't know how impactful they are. For density bonus, sure, and for the hotel, yes. Thus concludes my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thanks. I, yeah, I, the, for National, so I was thinking about bikes, too. I assume it's actually intentional that there's no bike lanes here, but is the thought that there's the, you know, the Expo Bike Path and the, along Higera Bike, so this, we don't need it on this street? Because my concern there is that, you know, there's no, I know you, if we go back to the, I think it's two slides back, the one that shows bike stuff and mobility, yeah. You know, you're showing that, like, you're going to make that crosswalk better, or better wayfinding to get to the bike path, but there's still, you know, there's no crossing along the tracks there, and it's like, you know, like, the Biona Creek path is so great if you're going down there, and you have to go all the way up to that corner to get, if you want to bike over on National. And if you just want to get to the train station, let's say you're going to Santa Monica, and you want to get to that train station instead of the other one, then it is a huge pain to get there, I think. But, it's hard because it's a train, you know, National, there's a lot of reasons why that stretch of National is trouble. So, I guess maybe I'm encouraging you, if you have any kind of like breakthrough ideas no one's ever thought of before, I still, I, we can't make this, we can't, you know, make this perfect, but that's just one thing that is still sticking out to me, and maybe it's not solvable. I like, I like the designs. I echo Commissioner Black's idea that it'd be great to think about if we, you know, really need cars on Stellar and Warner, and that's not how she put it, but that's how I'm putting it. And are there more, could there be more car-free spaces? I, again, want to say that I like the idea of the old rail line thing being a park, and so, one of the callers was mentioning the, that it would be good to hook up with at Obama and Jefferson, L.A. future, either, I don't know if he was saying plans that they have in L.A. to have bike infrastructure there, or if he was just hoping that they would, and then we would hook up with it. It seems like that is kind of here, that like you assume that bikes are on that street, and then they're going to take that bridge. Is that, is that right? From Higera to Obama down there in the lower right corner? Is that what's contemplated there?
Yeah, I think we actually might have a hidden slide at the end that has that one, because we didn't want to show every street. Well, now I'm not sure how to get to it. But, yeah.
It's okay, you don't have to.
But, yeah, no, so you're right. There are, there are bike lanes on Higera, on the bottom, yes. We have that graphic in here. But, I don't think we can be able to unhide it and figure it out.
It's okay, yeah.
If you just click on it at the very end, yeah, well, we could highlight it.
Oh, I see. Oh, cool. Great.
Yeah, so there's the Higera Street design.
Yeah, and I, and another, another thing, I remember kind of thinking that adding another, well, I mean, us putting it on this map and actually doing it, maybe is a different thing, but putting another, we have, we would have like a, you know, with the, that crossing of Biona Creek, with the Ince one, and then having even another one that more directly connects to Baldwin Hill scenic overlook would be so cool, and I'm glad that that's here. That doesn't mean it's going to happen, because it is expensive and very visionary, let's say, but that would be amazing, I think, because, I mean, we want to have incentives for open space here, too. I think that's a great, that's a good idea. But, that's the best open space that's not in our city, but is directly on our borders, and people should be able to get there. Some of the other questions, I support Alternative B. I like the idea of exploring higher densities, and I like the idea of extending the inclusionary to, you know, include that little triangle that wasn't part of the two circles, if that makes sense the way I said it. And, yeah, I'll ask the same thing. Did I miss any of the questions you were looking for, commentary, Ellen?
I think you hit them all. You'd like to incentivize open space hotels?
What is this thinking there? I, that's the first I'm hearing of it.
So, looking at additional potential height increases to incentivize hotels, and we can explore other incentives, but that's the one that we've hit on initially.
Why, why do we want hotels? I mean, I kind of know, but maybe you could say it.
It is a priority for the city. We've just, the city council's commissioned us to do a hotel study, and it's a, it's a high-revenue generating
Yeah.
And amenity for the city. So, it's something that, again, being a mixed-use area, we're trying to, you know, there's a lot of office and industry and tech and things like that in the Hayden Tract, and so, this would just be kind of part of that mix.
Yeah.
Potentially.
I'm afraid of incentives that would, you know, is this, I think because the Hayden Tract, we have a dream of, you know, being this mixed-use area, and, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of offices that are used there, and stuff that has been developed, redeveloped in the last, you know, a couple decades. And so, the number of lots that are actually going to be redeveloped with housing potentially, I don't know, that's my, that's my worry about the hotel thing. I will say that I, until a couple of weeks ago, I, our office was in the, in this, in the Hayden Tract, and the, all the people coming from out of town stay at the Culver Hotel, and they're like, I had to walk 20, you know, they're from New York, it's like, I had to walk 20 minutes in L.A., what's going on here? So, I see, I see the need, I guess, but I'm worried about, I guess that would be part of what I would want to know, is if I was, you know, deciding on the ordinance that comes to us or whatever, is like, is this going to cannibalize housing, you know, that kind of thing? But, thank you for explaining it, that's helpful. Yeah. Oh, and I will say that I'm not sure what form it takes, but I am a fan of Eric Owen Moss. In fact, I, one of my first visits to Culver City was in college when we went to look at those buildings. And our office, which, we don't have, we don't have an office anymore, the company I work for, but was in Stealth, which is one of his buildings. And I don't want to, again, I don't want it to stop the housing, but I was thinking, like, you know, those, a lot of the Fox Hills developments that we've been seeing are kind of going in a similar style, they're doing these stoops, townhomes, you know, whatever, and they're trying to be cohesive. And what is the, the question is, what is the way that, you know, could we get some crazy-looking, cool that people want to live in, buildings in this area? Like, again, not, not everyone is a fan of his, but like, I'm thinking of like, the other, the skyline that we're talking about building here, Cumulus isn't that interesting to me, and it would be great to send a message to, across the border in L.A. So, I don't know what form that takes. Again, I don't think it should be like the board who vetoes everything because it doesn't look like Eric Owen Moss, but maybe there's something creative we could do. I like that idea. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I guess we can, I have just a few comments. Is there any way we can get a pedestrian bridge over National? Because it seems impossible to slow traffic down, and I just feel like I'm going to die every time I cross it, really on both sides, but definitely crossing west to east, and then again, to get to the metro.
You're not the first to bring up that comment. Yeah, we've heard that a lot, we've heard that throughout our public outreach, and that seems like something that we would put into the future city actions, where it's not a public right-of-way improvement that we can just do ourselves, it's not a zoning requirement that we can have that the applicants do, but it's a high-priority thing that we would want to see. So, I think that's the type of thing we would put in that section of the document.
Great. And I agree with a lot of the comments we heard, protect the architecture, bike lanes, would love to see a paseo, and, yeah, I did hear something about that area being developed, with the bike lane being extended east from where it ends now at Sid K., I think. Anyway, there's so much potential there, so, so, thank you. All right, may we wrap, are we done? We're good? All right, well, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much for that, and can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I just had one thing to add.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot that part.
This item is done, but I just had one thing I wanted to mention. We do not have any items scheduled for our December meeting, so you will likely have that off, but we'll see you on January 14th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Now, I will take a motion to close the meeting. There we go. And we adjourned. All right, thank you so much. Wait, are we done?
Moved by Commissioner Black, second by Commissioner Van Galen.
It's late.
Thank you, motion passes with four i's.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 11:10 P.M.